...meeting of the DuPage County Board to order. I invite everyone to stand and join in the Pledge of Allegiance. Member Sam Tornatore, will you please lead the Pledge of Allegiance? And I'll ask everyone to remain standing for the invocation.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now I'd like to invite Andrew Hogan from the DuPage Care Center. Please be seated. Oh, I'm sorry.
Good morning. We gather together in a spirit of service, not to ourselves, but rather we are driven by a higher purpose, one of civic duty to the residents of DuPage County. We apply our education, our experience, and our expertise to this shared goal of serving our county community. Our dedication to others gives honor to our work. May we ever be mindful of this amidst any frustration or challenge. As we gather to continue our noble goal, our higher purpose, we acknowledge our higher power. For many in this room, that is the divine. If you are not a person of faith, let us reflect. If you are a person of faith, let us pray. Almighty and eternal God, as we come before you, focus our minds and hearts upon your will. Remove the many distractions that dissipate our energy. Remind us of our special purpose, gathered together in your name, to be stewards and servants. Come to us and be with us. Enter our heart, mind, and spirit. Guide us what we are to do and where we ought to tend. Show us what we must accomplish in order that, with your help, we may be able to please you in all things. You alone are the author of our decisions. Grant us a spirit of humility that we may seek to serve. Grant us a spirit of gratitude that we may recognize each moment as an opportunity to serve and each person as a gift and a blessing. Grant us a spirit of patience for those who test our goodwill. Grant us a spirit of fortitude for the times when we face fatigue. Continue to bless the work that you do through us. Continue to bless all the employees and departments of DuPage County. Bless the leadership here present and the special residents of the care center. May we continue to be good stewards of this region and its resources. Unite us to your will as we serve you and the people of DuPage County. We ask all these things in your name as you live and reign forever and ever. Amen.
Clerk, please take the roll.
Cahill.
Here.
Chaplain.
Here.
Childress.
Here.
Covert.
Here.
DeSart.
Here.
Eckoff.
Here.
Evans.
Here.
Galassi.
Here.
Garcia.
Here.
Guston.
Here.
Krajewski.
Here.
LaPlante.
Here.
Ozog.
Here.
Rutledge.
Here.
Schworzy.
Here.
Tornatori.
Here.
You.
Here.
Anze.
Here. Okay. There's been a request to allow remote participation from member DeSart under Section 7A of the Open Meetings Act. Pursuant to Section A of the Open Meetings Act, if a quorum of members of the public body is physically present as required by Section 2.01, a majority of the public body may allow a member of that body to attend the meeting by other means if the member is prevented from physically attending because of personal illness or disability, employment, purposes or businesses of the public body, a family or other emergency. Is there a motion to allow? Thank you. All in favor? Motion carries. Okay. Good morning. Each year, first I'd like to invite member Chaplain and Dr. Margaret Scotella up to the podium. Each year, we offer a proclamation that seeks to raise awareness of Kawasaki disease, an illness that comes unsuddenly, usually strikes young people, and causes a host of unusual symptoms and can be very dangerous. And most frightening, as we have moved through the COVID pandemic, Kawasaki disease and COVID shared some of the symptoms, some of the same symptoms, leading to confusion for parents. This year, an expert from the American Academy of Pediatrics joins us for our yearly awareness proclamation requested by member Liz Chaplain. We are happy to welcome Dr. Margaret Scotella, a physician and representative of the State Chapter of the AAP, to talk about the importance of accurately diagnosing Kawasaki disease. I'll read today's proclamation, and then we can ask both of you to say a few words. Whereas Kawasaki disease is a serious illness characterized by inflammation of the blood vessels throughout the body, primarily affecting young children, and can lead to permanent heart disease, lifelong aneurysms, stent placement, heart transplant, skin disorders, and childhood anxiety. And whereas Kawasaki disease, more commonly known as KD, is a number-one cause of permanent heart disease in children and is diagnosed approximately 5,000 U.S. children annually who are primarily under the age of eight. And whereas recent instances of young adults suffering from heart attacks in their 20s and 30s show evidence of old aneurysms and a misdiagnosis of KD as a child. Whereas the American Heart Association, the World Health Federation, and the National Institute of Health recognize the need for proper and timely diagnosis, education, and treatment for KD. Now therefore, be it removed, that I, Deborah A. Conroy, Chair of the DuPage County Board and Member of the County Board, do hereby designate January 26, 2023, as Kawasaki Disease Awareness Day in DuPage County, and encourage DuPage County residents to learn more about the signs and symptoms of this disease, to seek the appropriate treatment for care. Do I have a motion? Thank you. Enacted. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. Enacted this day, the 24th day of January 2023, in Wheaton, Illinois.
Thank you all so much for this proclamation as representative of physicians that care for children in Illinois. We're really grateful to further this awareness. Kawasaki disease is something that can be life-threatening, and it is a challenge in the medical community. It is not something that's fully understood, the cause, and therefore there's not a specific test to diagnose it. But it is a condition that requires parents to identify the symptoms, which are fever lasting five days, rash, redness of the eyes, redness of the lips, swelling of the hands and feet, and swelling of a lymph node in the neck. So important that parents are aware that this is a diagnosis that needs to be addressed by their primary care physician immediately, and treatment can be provided that can prevent the complications of damage to the heart that can result in lifelong coronary artery disease. So thank you so much for devoting this time to this very important condition, and I appreciate your time.
So I just want to thank the board for, again, recognizing Kawasaki Day. It's so important. My daughter was diagnosed with Kawasaki when she was seven. She was misdiagnosed the first time we took her into the doctor. They said she had allergic reaction to a virus. She wasn't getting any better. My older sister's a physician. I called her. She said, "Trust your judgment. Take her back in." Took her back in. We saw another physician, and this physician properly diagnosed her daughter, and she got treatment within 10 days of the onset of the fever. Quick diagnosis is the key to having a healthy outcome of Kawasaki disease. So if your child doesn't get gamma-goblin and high-dose aspirin treatment within these 10 days, your child could end up with coronary aneurysms and many other health complications. So what I'm going to ask the board members, if you can post something about Kawasaki, share it on your pages. It's so important that parents recognize the signs and symptoms of this childhood illness. So thank you all very much.
Oh, we did. I'm sorry. Okay. Good morning, everybody. I'll start my remarks today with a note of thanks for all of you who joined me at the State of the County address held at the annual multi-chamber expo last Wednesday in Downers Grove. It was a great event, and I enjoyed meeting with so many members of our business community. Thanks to Choose DuPage and Chamber 630 for planning the successful gathering. As we move forward into today's meeting, I recognize the large amount of people gathered to provide public comment regarding the new state law banning assault weapons. I believe when we talk about matters of public safety, we should recognize the areas in which we stand united. The fact is, we all want safe communities. DuPage remains one of the safest counties in the state and nation. We are fortunate to have highly trained and professional law enforcement agencies. Our criminal justice and court systems are highly respected. The county board continues to prioritize public safety, dedicating 60% of our annual budget to public safety. As the Chair of the DuPage County Board, I believe our job as elected officials is to uphold the laws of the state of Illinois, all of the laws. We do not individually decide which laws we will uphold. To do so creates confusion, contributing to misinformation and doubt, which can lead to some of our residents feeling less safe. I have great respect for all those who choose to work in law enforcement. I respect our prosecutors, public defenders, jail and probation staff, and our judges. Our system works best when we are all committed to upholding the laws equally. And we will continue our long tradition of keeping DuPage County a safe place to live, work, and raise a family. That is what I believe our residents have elected us to do. And now I'd like to turn it over to Representative or to member you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd actually like to ask for a moment of silence for the mass shooting victims in California, one which occurred on Lunar New Year's Eve, killing 11 people in Monterey Park, and another two days later in Half Moon Bay, near San Francisco, which killed seven. Both killers reportedly used magazine-fed semi-automatic pistols or a handgun. And as one of the two East Asian members on the board, celebrating Lunar New Year's this past weekend, the shooting again reminded me that we cannot celebrate without the fear or specter of gun violence. This is actually the 39th mass shooting in the United States in the 24 days of 2023. So really, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence for all the victims. Thank you.
Thank you, member you. Okay, now we'll move on to public comment. On the matter of public comment, according to our county board rules, members of the public shall be afforded time to address the board. Individual remarks shall not exceed three minutes in length, nor shall the total time provided for all remarks exceed 30 minutes. As we have a large number of speakers, I ask everyone to keep the remarks brief and respectful. Our first person, speaker is... I will be calling names four at a time, so if you can be ready, one first speaker in front of you is finished, that would be helpful. Evan Summers. Ken Walther. Lyndy Rollis. And Joe Casantino are the first four speakers today.
Morning, Madam Chair, County Board. My name is Evan Summers. I'm the Village Manager for the Village of Bensonville. I'm not here to talk about the topic of the day, unfortunately. I'm here to talk about a rezoning issue. I'm here to speak against Agenda Item 11B, the proposed rezoning of 5 North 047 Route 83 in unincorporated Bensonville. The Village of Bensonville opposes the rezoning of this property from residential to commercial, and we believe that if the county moves forward with rezoning the property, it will constitute unlawful spot zoning. To be sure, this residential site is residentially surrounded by public uses, including an elementary school, a middle school, and a park. Both Bensonville School District 2 and Bensonville Park District oppose the rezoning of this parcel as well. Simply put, a residentially zoned property should not be replaced by a three-story commercial storage facility that encroaches on public space frequented by children. This rezoning would constitute illegal spot zoning because a commercial use is not in line with surrounding land uses. In fact, the nearest commercial lot is over one mile away from this subject parcel. Furthermore, the county's own Route 83 corridor study identified this specific parcel as a key property for residential redevelopment. That's the county's own land use planning. Spot zoning is illegal, and we have erred our concerns with the state's attorney's office. Bensonville's village attorneys believe that the courts would block the rezoning if this was challenging courts. Therefore, and in the interest of protecting children, residents, and taxpayers, I plead to this board to acknowledge the facts before you today and vote no on the rezoning of 5 North 047 Route 83. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, board, and thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Ken Walther. I've been a resident of DuPage County for 64 years. I've stayed in this town and raised my kids for the fact of the good police force and our sheriff that has made our county safe. With that said, I want to say that I want to support Sheriff Mendrick for his ability to stand up against this law that was illegally passed in our state reps. There's a TRO against this ruling right now because they did not follow the procedures that were given in the state constitution. So with that, thank you very much for your time.
Lyndy Rollis, Downers Grove. Joe Casantino.
Good morning. I'd like to start out by expressing my utmost respect for Sheriff Mendrick, who's continued to fulfill the oath he took when he was elected sheriff by upholding, supporting, and defending the United States Constitution, especially in the face of many who are trying to wield their power and attempt to coerce him into violating his oath. The extreme irony in that action is the members of the board that are either willfully neglecting their oath to support and defend the Constitution or willfully choosing to ignore it by placing personal and partisan politics above the rights of law-abiding citizens of the state of Illinois. You are in effect doing the very thing that you're accusing Sheriff Mendrick of doing. Supreme Court has ruled in Heller v. D.C. in 2008 that the Second Amendment protects arms in common use at the time for lawful purposes like self-defense and arms that are typically possessed by law-abiding citizens for lawful purposes. This was reaffirmed in McDonald v. Chicago, and most recently in the New York State Rifle and Pistol Association v. Bruin. AR-15s, their variants, copies, among other rifles, listed in House Bill 5471, number over 20 million nationwide. That makes them in common use. This illegal and unconstitutional law suffered its first challenge in defeat and will continue to lose as it faces more challenges both in the state and federally. Chief Justice John Marshall in 1803 case of Marbury v. Madison wrote that a law repugnant to the Constitution is void. That means because this law is contrary to the United States Constitution, it has no legal merit, and an individual's duty is to ignore such law. House Bill 5471 is taking both Second Amendment rights and the right to self-defense away from lawful, law-abiding gun owners and instead emboldening criminals. Criminals are still going to get their hands on guns whether the law's on the books or not, and most criminals using guns don't have a void to begin with. Like the board is asking Sheriff Mendrick to do, I would ask those requesting Sheriff Mendrick to step down to do the same in his stead. You're obviously letting personal and partisan politics get in the way of your effective running of the county. You violated your oath to support and defend the Constitution, and there should be an investigation into this board using its power to influence another elected official to step down because certain special interest groups are demanding it. I would again like to thank Sheriff Mendrick for standing up for the rights of the citizens of DuPage County and to not waver in the face of having a treasonous board asking for his resignation or for recantation of his sworn duty to uphold both the law and the Constitution. Thank you for your time.
The next four speakers are Ronald Welleritz, Jax West, Mary Ann Norris, and Leanne Rice
Good morning, members of the DuPage County Board. I'm a senior citizen, veteran, and retired longtime public service. I moved from Cook County to DuPage looking for the renowned leadership shown here in the past. This attack on Sheriff James Mendrick I find is appalling, unconscionable, and unacceptable. You started the meeting out with reciting the Pledge of Allegiance, which ends with "with liberty and justice for all." Yet you want to take away our liberty of God-given rights? I find that hypocritical. Sheriff Mendrick should be praised for taking his stand while you want to take our rights and liberties away. It shows that Sheriff Mendrick is putting his service above himself for the people of DuPage County. As a veteran, I took an oath over 50 years ago and served my country overseas, away from family and loved ones in order to preserve our freedom. In that oath, there are words like "that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States." Examining that passage, scholars and legal experts state that you are not swearing or affirming to support the President of the United States, the country, the flag, or a particular service, but rather the Constitution, which symbolizes all of these things. The oath states to defend against all enemies, foreign and domestic. As elected officials, you should you take a similar oath, I would imagine. I ask that you take that oath as seriously as I and other oath-takers such as Sheriff Mendrick do. I'm here supporting Sheriff Mendrick on his stance on the United States Constitution and the Second Amendment. In this day and age of defunding the police and painting a target on their back and letting left-wing domestic terrorist groups such as Antifa and others to run our cities into the ground, causing millions of dollars in damage, personal injury, and even death, your law enforcement personnel should have the power to stop these individuals by any means necessary and prosecuting them to the fullest extent of the law. But nowadays, the criminals have more rights than the victims of their crimes. Isn't your priority to keep the citizens' lives and property number one? It seems that one takes responsibility for their actions. You need to enforce the laws that make individuals responsible for the crimes they commit. Law-abiding people have a right under the Constitution to keep and bear arms and protect their lives. Criminals do not care about laws. In fact, they want you to strip away our rights because when you outlaw the guns of law-abiding people, only the outlaws will have guns. All politicians should know that we, the people, elect you, and we, the people, can vote you out of office, too. You are elected to represent us, we, the people, and not we, the people, to serve you. And by the way, maybe you should go back and reread the oaths you took. My oath does not have an expiration date. And also remember, respect is something that is earned, it is not given. Sheriff James Mendrick has earned our respect and the support, and we support him 100% on his stand. Freedom is not free. If you'd like to see what the cost of freedom is, I suggest you go to any VA hospital. Thank you, Sheriff Mendrick, for all you do, as well as your staff do for the citizens of DuPage County. Thank you, members of the board.
My name is Jax West, and I have lived in DuPage County my entire life. According to GunViolenceArchive.com, here are the number of children under the age of 18 who have been murdered by guns in 2023 so far. January 1, Lyric Thomas, 5 years old, in Charlotte, North Carolina. Amethyst Sistine Silva, 11, in Corpus Christi, Texas. Jarvis Watts, 9, in Chicago, Illinois. January 2, unknown female, 5, in Spring, Texas. January 4, Journey Carol Ward, 3, in Dumfries, Virginia. Liam Bruch, 5, in Florissant, Colorado. Gavin Haight, 4. Eamon Haight, 7. Sienna Haight, 7. Riley Haight, 12. And Macy Haight, 17, in Cedar City, Utah. January 7, Mackenzie Hager, 10. And Autumn Hager, 13, in Fenville, Michigan. Naseer Creighton, 10. Nyla Creighton, 15. And Cassine Creighton, 18, in High Point, North Carolina. January 9, Avery Jones, 1. And an unknown male, 9, in Jonestown, Mississippi. January 15, DeEvan McFaul, 11, in Dallas, Texas. January 16, Brexelle Torres, 11, in Syracuse, New York. Nicholas Peraz, under a year old. And Alyssa Peraz, 16, in Goshen, California. Unknown male, 2, in Camden, Alabama. January 18, Oscar L. Beck, 7, in Fort Wayne, Indiana. January 19, Edwin Gaines, 5, in Jennings, Louisiana. Sean Lapore, 11. And Jesse Lapore, 9, in Murfreesboro, Tennessee. January 22, Jordan Nixon, 17, in Chicago, Illinois. January 23, just happened yesterday, they don't have the two boys' names yet, age 15 and 18, in Des Moines, Iowa. 30. 30 kids have been killed in 2023 so far. At least 314 children, age 11 years and younger, were killed by gunfire in 2022. Another 1,360 children between the ages of 12 and 17 died in shootings. The Gun Violence Archive said it was the most children to die or be injured by gunfire in a single year since it started keeping track in 2014. If our new gun laws can save just one child, it's worth it. Do your job, Sheriff Mendrick. You are to enforce laws, not make them. Thank you.
Leanne Reese. Leanne Reese Om. Leanne? Leanne's next.
Hello. I'm Leanne Rice Om. I'm Carol Sutcliffe. And I'm serious, depending on hours in Illinois, a governor, a prosecutor, a mom, a friend, an artist, and a people who want to keep Illinois a house full of 5471. It's very important. Everyone needs to be safe and comfortable everywhere. I may disagree against a man's record, a constitution, that the moral people may not want to be selfish, with using a gun as a result. The passing of marriage is too overcome for safety. I'd say the people are mental health, and are all terrible, and they are too fighting and too careless and fearless. And because, and they are too fighting and too scared for all, if you have a preparation of a gunshot, boom, a lake, a glide, a port, a parade, it's a hailing havoc. And so, had my PCIC and my personal background, I had spoken to the police officer with his face. I do never want to hide a gun at home because it is too dangerous. I can't, I can't go. And that's why the U.S. has the most gun out of the world. I know those two are so happy for all who is more than other countries. So, the U.S. requires a whole weapon ban is very helpful. And please, could keep all our public on vacation, save the state for the parliament. Thank you.
Lyndi Callis, Mary Ann Norris, Debra Ness. And Ayesha Fernandez will be the next four.
Hi, my name is Lyndi Callis. I'm from Downers Grove. Been a resident here for over 30 years. First of all, I want to thank the board for supporting HB 5471 and for speaking out against what Sheriff Mendrick has said. To the sheriff, who is not here, first of all, it'd be nice to see you in person and be able to have a conversation. Just giving a one-sided statement does not help. So you need to come and face your constituents. I've read your statement, the first one, and then the reaction to the press conference yesterday. I've read it over and over again, and it makes no sense to me. This whole, oh, I thought I had to go door-to-door is a big red herring. There is nothing, and I'm not a lawyer, there's nothing in that law that said, oh, everybody's got to go out and go door-to-door. And nobody is taking guns away from anybody who already has them. These guns are killing people. This is a good law, and you, in your job, need to support all the laws that are passed by the state. If somebody wants to question the constitutionality, it goes through the court, and that's what should happen. Your job is to enforce the laws evenly. And so what you've said made no sense to me at all. And I just want to remind you, you were elected by the people, and the people can unelect you. We did it once with a Peter Roscom who would not talk to his constituents, and we can do it again. Thank you.
Mary Ann Norris.
The Second Amendment states that a well-regulated militia, being necessary to the security of a free state, the right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed. The definition of infringed? To encroach upon in any way that violates the law or rights of another. So to make a law that bans a certain type of weapon is to infringe upon the rights of every law-abiding citizen of Illinois. The Constitution makes no exception. It says shall not be infringed. It is heartbreaking that criminals, excuse me, would kill children, as my fellow citizen has mentioned. But those are the criminals who are killing people. The behavior of criminals should not decide what is good or right for law-abiding citizens. As in the recent mass killings in California, you are probably aware that California has some of the strictest gun laws in the country, like New York. That does not stop the killing. But what's more important is our Constitution shall not be infringed. So I want to thank Sheriff Mendrick as the chief law enforcement officer in DuPage County. I want to thank him for upholding his oath to uphold the Constitution of the United States by resisting Governor Pritzker's illegal, unconstitutional law that infringes upon the right of every law-abiding citizen in DuPage County and Illinois by banning certain types of weapons. I thank you, Sheriff Mendrick, for your courage and for your leadership, and I publicly express my support for you. May God bless you, Sheriff Mendrick, and may God bless the United States of America.
Debra Norris, Debra Ness.
I very much appreciate you, you board members who have supported this gun bill, this law that means so much to us in the community to keep us safe. This is a very unsafe time in our lives, and I just want you to know how much I appreciate you. This new gun law, I don't understand why there is so much concern over the fact that Illinois wants the semi-automatic assault weapons off the streets. And to make that happen is very important to us. And those who already have them, why should they be concerned about registering? It does not make sense to me. I honestly am concerned about what has been happening in Illinois and with the people who seem to think that it's all right that we have mass killings when we go to a Fourth of July parade. I'm just, I'm sick to see what's going on here, and I want us to do something. When I think of muskets, I think of people when they wrote the amendments to the Constitution, they weren't thinking of semi-automatic weapons. They were thinking of muskets. For heaven's sakes, we have to do something about the guns in this country. It's sickening. Please, keep working as hard as you are, and let's replace this man if he can't do his job. His job is not to interpret the law. He's not an attorney. I am an attorney, and I wouldn't even proceed to figure out how to stand up and fight against this law. This is just unbelievable to me that Sheriff Mendrick would not want us to be safe. Thank you.
Ayesha Fernandez, and the next four speakers will be Ed Minor, Thomas Martin, Joanne Brennan, and David Lombardo.
Hello, my name is Yona Fernandez, and I'm a resident of DuPage County. Last week, I saw a statement issued by Sheriff Mendrick that deeply concerned me. In that statement, the sheriff, whose main job is law enforcement, refuses to enforce the law. Yesterday, after a press conference held by local elected legislators, he released another statement saying that the legislation was poorly written. This year, there have been 39 mass shootings in the U.S. in 24 days. Let that sink in. Mass shootings only represent a fraction of gun deaths in the United States. Every day, more than 200 people are killed by guns. More than half of those die by suicide. More than 90% of attempted suicides with a gun are successful. I could, I could keep going with numbers about gun deaths in the U.S., but everybody knows them. I would like to speak about the trauma I experienced every day when I sent my kids to school, not knowing if my kids will come back in one piece. I forgot how many times I had to tell my kids, 10 and 13, it started three years ago, about another school shooting, and how important it is for them to run to safety. My husband had to teach this year our 10-year-old son to jump out the window of his second-floor classroom, to the roof, and from there to safety. His question was, what about my friends? Can I take them with me? These are not conversations we should have with our 10-years-old kids. We should not have to walk into a public space and look around to see where the closest exit is. We should not have to go to a movie in the park and hope that the police officers patrolling the area will be able to identify a threat and stop it. These are all thoughts I live with every single day. So for the sheriff to refuse to enforce a law and to reduce gun violence and save lives is outrageous. We expect our law enforcement officers to keep us safe. The statements from the sheriff created a tense atmosphere, and those in support of sensible gun measures to reduce gun violence are being throlled and threatened by gun owners. Yesterday, there were calls on social media for gun owners to show up today and intimidate us. Is this what the sheriff wanted? For citizens and elected officials to be threatened for speaking up to keep our communities safe? We elected the legislators who created and passed the assault ban. The majority of people and responsible gun owners in DuPage and in the U.S. are in favor of life-saving gun legislation. Laws are made to protect us by legislators we elected. The sheriff was elected to enforce laws, not to decide which law is constitutional or not, or whether is it poorly written or not. If we do not agree with the law, there is a system in place, so let's follow the system. That is a job for the courts. Thank you, Chairwoman Deb Conroy, for your statement in support of the law, and county board members for voting to support a state and federal ban on assault weapons. I am asking the sheriff, again, to retract his statement and do the job he was elected to do. He works for all of us taxpayers, not for the gun lobby. And I am asking the board to take any actions available to address the situation. Thank you for all your work.
Ed Minor.
I'm Ed Minor, and I've lived in Elmhurst for pretty close to 40 years. I support the Constitution of the United States. I believe we live in a nation of laws, and I think the citizens in this country bear a responsibility of abiding by the laws that we have to regulate us. I support the Protect Illinois Community Act. I support common sense gun regulations, and I don't believe that the Second Amendment means that, says that guns can't be regulated at all. I'm sure that this law will be tested for its constitutionality. I'm confident that it will be upheld, and when it becomes law, I expect that law enforcement officials on a state and local basis will enforce those regulations. Thanks.
Thomas Martin. Thomas Martin.
Hello, I'm Tom Martin. I'm a 65-year resident of DuPage County. I'm a sportsman. My friends will tell you I'm not a very good sportsman, but I am a sportsman. I support the Constitution. I support the right to bear arms, the Second Amendment. However, there is a problem in the U.S., and I think that government is here, it's designed, everybody does their job, the legislative branch, the judicial branch, the executive branch. And I think that the executive branch does not have the right to determine whether or not they execute the law. And I call upon the board to do whatever is in their power to reprimand Sheriff Mendrick. Thank you.
Joanne Brennan.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of DuPage County Board, and I thank you for the opportunity to address this body and the matter of Sheriff Mendrick. I'm David Lombardo, and I'm the Vice President of the Illinois State Rifle Association. As an NRA Training Council, I've trained over 8,000 students in the safe and lawful use of firearms. And for eight years, I was president of the Aurora Sportsman's Club, the largest shooting club in the Midwest. I work as an expert witness in both civil and criminal firearm-related litigation and have represented over 40 clients in the past two years. For over 10 years, I've been the co-host and executive producer of On Target Radio aired on AM 560 The Answer, where we frequently dissect Second Amendment issues. And I'm a journalist for The Illinois Shooter and, most recently, American Handgunner Magazine. Sheriff Mendrick joins 73 other Illinois county sheriffs, all of whom took an oath to support the Constitution of the United States. Concomitantly, they refused to enforce House Bill 5471, the Protect Illinois Communities Act, because it is patently unconstitutional. In the 2008 Heller case, SCOTUS held that the Second Amendment protects arms that are, quote, "typically possessed by law-abiding citizens for lawful purposes. Such arms are not chosen by the government but by American society," unquote. The AR-15 is the most popular rifle sold today. The National Shooting Sports Foundation reports that of the 400 million lawfully-owned firearms in the United States, about 20 million are AR-15s. They are used for competition, recreational shooting, hunting, and personal defense. And despite what some would suggest, no military in history has ever carried AR-15 rifles, none. Because Heller pertained to the District of Columbia, SCOTUS heard McDonald versus City of Chicago in 2010. Writing for the majority, Justice Thomas wrote that the Second Amendment is fully applicable to states because, quote, "the right to keep and bear arms is guaranteed by the Fourteenth Amendment as a privilege of American citizenship," unquote. There are those that point out that seven states have gun bans. However, those bans predate the New York Rifle and Pistol Association versus Bruin last year. In Bruin, SCOTUS ruled New York's concealed carry law unconstitutional, extending the right to own a gun for self-defense in the home, as enshrined in Heller, to exist outside the home as well. The sum total of Heller, McDonald, and Bruin is very clear. Law-abiding citizens have a right to own what the Illinois Legislature disingenuously calls the AR-15 and similar firearms assault weapons. It's a made-up term designed to give a negative connotation to a very popular style of firearm. I fully support Sheriff Mendrick, and I thank him for his courage and honest dedication to upholding his obligation to the Constitution of the United States. And as duly-elected representatives, you have a moral obligation to do the same. Thank you.
Members A.
Madam Chair, we've reached the 30 minutes. I'm asking if we can extend the additional 30 minutes with public comment.
Do we have a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We will extend another 30 minutes.
Thank you.
All right. Is Joanne Brennan here? No. Okay. Petey Christus? Peter, I'm sorry. Pardon? Yes.
Good morning, board. First, I want to acknowledge the hundreds of pro-Second Amendment activists outside and downstairs. We see you, we hear you, and we're so thankful that you guys are here celebrating our rights while we still have them. Thank you, guys. My name's Peter. I'm the Illinois, Missouri, and Northwest Indiana Field Rep for Turning Point USA, America's largest youth conservative organization. But the reason why I'm here today is in support of Sheriff Mendrick and the United States Constitution. With the recent passage of House Bill 5471, an unconstitutional ban on semi-automatic rifles, roughly 80 county sheriffs throughout the state of Illinois have stood up to this tyranny and are upholding their oath to the Constitution, the same Constitution that each and every one of you took an oath over when you were elected yourselves. Sheriff Mendrick did not take an oath to J.B. Pritzker or the radical left elitists down in Springfield, who are trying so desperately to take our rights away. He took it to the Constitution. His duty is to protect the rights provided by us, by the Constitution, which include the Second Amendment, the right to keep bare arms, which shall not be infringed. The right to keep and bear arms is imperative for us to have life, liberty, and a pursuit of happiness. This is what our founding fathers fought for. This is what Sheriff Mendrick is fighting for, and this is what we, the people, are continuing to fight for. Not one of you who try to serve this tyranny should call yourselves American. Advocating for our rights to be stripped away is the most least American thing you can do. Many of you ran on the platform of, in Illinois, we can trust women. But you don't trust... But you don't trust women to exercise their First and Second Amendment. To Ms. Liz Chaplin, for an example, you've been an outspoken critic of Sheriff Mendrick, but let me educate you on what the Second Amendment states. "A well-regulated militia, being necessary to the security of a free state, the right of the people to keep and bear arms, shall not be infringed." If tyranny prevails, Illinois and our rights as we know it will be defeated. That is what we, the people of Illinois, and what Sheriff Mendrick are fighting against. That's why it's time to come and support a sheriff who is elected by the people, like you said, Ms., to serve the people and to defend our rights. And here's the deal. Lastly, we, the people of Illinois, will not comply. We will not back down to tyrants and bullies, and as the great state of Texas says, "Come and take it."
Scott Legaki. Scott Legaki? I'm sorry. And then after him will be Glenn Daley and Jan Shaw.
Thank you very much. I'm Scott Legaki. I appreciate your belief in upholding the laws, as they should be based on the Constitution and the respect of law enforcement. That's why citizens and businesses of Cook County moved to DuPage. However, the laws violate the Constitution. It ignores root cause of psychotropics, gangs, and lack of enforcement by liberal prosecutors. I give my support to the sheriff as a constitutional protector and ask that the board and others take the time to read the Constitution themselves. Thank you.
Glenn Daley. He should be downstairs. Glenn Daley? Jan Shaw? Is there a hearing down there?
Am I the first one from downstairs, your overflow crowd?
Yes, Jan.
And you? 250, maybe 300 people? Anyway, I came to talk about the Constitution. I carry these with me. It's my fault.
They can hear you. They can hear you.
Can you hear me? The folks here can't hear me. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me now? The folks downstairs, we got about 250, maybe 300 people down here. I hoped to be upstairs so I could hand these to the county board themselves, but I did the next best thing. I gave them to Jim Zay on his way into the boardroom. I'm hoping he had a chance to pass them out. This is a Declaration of Independence and a Constitution. You guys need to read it. Please start with the Bill of Rights versus Second Amendment, then you might want to go to the Declaration of Independence. That preamble where it ends with, "Governments are instituted by men to secure the rights of men, drawing their just powers from the consent of the governed." I got news for you. You're losing your consent. So for those of you who call for Sheriff Mendrick to resign or refute what he said, I suggest you read this and then take your own words to heart. And resign!
Glenn Daley. Glenn Daley.
I represent all these folks down here, outdoors, in the state of the United States. Test, test. The mic is... Test. They can hear you. Can you hear me? Test one, test two. All right, I support the sheriff. This is about, this is about the pendulum. This is about the pendulum. The last time I looked, 70 to 75 percent of voting Americans say this country's going the wrong way. I want to know if the board's on the 70 or the 30 side. I also want to know with regards to the clearances as far as when this, there were seven ladies up there when this thing was signed on a Sunday afternoon. I want to know if the mothers and fathers are World War II vets. One, Vietnam, Afghanistan, they can say, "Hey, bring my son, put a law into order to protect me, save me." They didn't get that choice. When that thing was signed, some guy named Harmon went and said, "You know, we put this into law, but I don't think it's going to work." Said it twice. It's not going to stop crying. Let me know when I'm lying. Then we had a guy named Pritzker, who went and took an airplane ride to Divas. Am I saying it right? Why is he going there? He's supposed to be the governor of Illinois. He has nothing to do with what's going on here. And all the heavy hitters at Divas weren't there either this time around. I'd like to know and see the receipts. Did we pay for that, or did he pay for that? This is where the pendulum swings. We start finding out what's really going on here. Then we have a good sheriff, where all of a sudden, we got all these people, congressmen, the elected officials, saying, "Whoa, turn that statement around." Why? Is that because DuPage is too close to Cook County? They've got another chance at taking out another person that can support the Constitution? And in closing, with the pendulum swinging, this law will be struck down within six to 10 months, and I got a funny feeling we're going to have a female president, the way things are going with this document problem. I thank you for your time. Have a good day.
The next four speakers are Jamie Clark, Curtis Posge, Joe Ponor, Leo Pankala. Jamie Clark.
Hello, my name's Leo Pankala. I'm the commander of the Wheaton VFW. I'm here today to speak on our behalf as far as our application for our zoning variance. I won't take up much of your time. We've submitted some packets to the zoning board of appeals that has letters of support in them as well, that I did not see in the packet online, so if you could please review that. We really appreciate your support in this matter. Without generating funds, we cannot continue to stay in the community and help veterans as well as any other members of the community that we work with. So we're asking you to please approve our variance today. Thank you.
Curtis Posge from the Village of Bensonville. Oh, James. Go ahead, Jamie. Wait, Jamie Clark next, or? Jamie Clark.
I'm here to say thank you to Sheriff Mendrick for sticking up for our constitutional rights. I log here. The 2A plainly states that our rights shall not be infringed. The passing of HB 5471 is unlawful, and that will be proven in court. The 2A was created to protect the citizens from a tyrannical government, and it's sad and almost comical. You don't even see the hypocrisy. Thankfully, we have a sheriff who is willing to protect his citizens from our own government. When the public question what the government is doing, we're told to contact our elected officials. I've emailed all of you about this gun bill, and none of you responded to me. None, nothing, not even a form letter. That's not acceptable and needs to change. It's quite clear that our legislators no longer vote how the people want them to, based on the over 10,000 opposing witness slips for this gun bill on the third amending of it. Our elected officials now work for their own agendas, and this is intolerable. The bill is once again an overreach in regards to parental rights. If I decide my child is responsible enough for a FOID card, that's my decision. You don't know my child. You don't get to decide for me. I'm curious how many of you can even tell me what an AR stands for. There's no such thing as an assault rifle or weapon. Assault is an action. If I were to punch you with my fist, would you call my fist an assault fist? It makes no sense. It sounds stupid, because it is. Yet you want to ban something you know nothing about, which is ignorance. Mental health is a huge issue that's being ignored. Statistics show that more than 50% of gun deaths in the U.S. is by suicide. We need more mental health resources and the abundant access to them. Banning guns is not the solution. Criminals will obtain guns illegally. Banning guns will not change this. Ultimately, it's not gun control, it's people control. You're using national tragedies to push an agenda. We, the people, are tired of having our freedoms eroded. Illinois does not want this bill, as 90 county sheriffs have made this clear. You won't be happy until every gun is banned, because it's much easier to control the population when they are unarmed. Canada and Australia have proven how dangerous a government can be without an armed populace. We will never be like Canada or Australia. This is the tyrannical government our forefathers warned us about. Thank you, Sheriff Mendrick.
Curtis.
I'm the Community and Economic Development Director with the Village of Bensonville. I'm here to speak on the Berman La Patina zoning matter before you today. I'll be brief, since the village manager summers covered most of what we would be speaking about. Essentially, we are asking you to overturn the decision made by the ZB and the Community Development Commission. This property, this unincorporated property, is surrounded by residential and school district, park district, facilities. This rezoning, we believe, would constitute a spot zoning and would not stand up to legal scrutiny. The property is called out in multiple planning documents as being residential. The Village of Bensonville's conference of plan includes a property, single-family residential. But more importantly, the county's own, recently-approved, roadie, three-quarters-study, calls this as residential. The property owners say Bensonville is intentionally blocking the development of the site, but they aren't even trying to market the site to residential users. The broker, John Green Commercial, has a listing sheet marketing it as a commercial opportunity. The property is listed on all major real estate sites, such as LoopNet, as a commercial opportunity. The recommended zoning change and the associated uses, conditional use and variance for the storage facility, do not meet the standards in the county's zoning relief. We're asking you to overturn the decision before today. Thank you.
Joe Amore. Joe Amor, Amore.
Morning, Joe Amore, Philo Bar President. I came here to speak on the fact that I am a law-abiding citizen, legal gun owner, got my FOID card, I follow the laws as written. It's not up to me to decide which laws I choose to obey. Laws that are written have to go through the court system, as our country requires. If there's any determination of those laws to be unconstitutional, that particular law will be struck down. However, I also want to thank Sheriff Mendrick for restricting people to the right to bear arms by not allowing them to bring their firearms into this building. We have too many mass shootings. I have the right to go to a public event, whether or not it is a parade, or a dance, or a concert, and not worried about some person who has access to rapid-fire weapons shooting randomly into the crowd. That is not the freedom that we believe in. Thank you for your time.
Sheila Collings. And after her will be Sharon Birch. Sheila Collings. Sharon Birch. Elizabeth Albert.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'll be sharing an excerpt from the Chicago Tribune from their editorial board. The entire piece is available online and in the newspaper, and I quote, "How well the new law will hold up in court remains unknown. Illinoisans can expect the legal wrangling to last months, if not longer. In the meantime, however, the Protect Illinois Communities Act is enforceable law, and all "...from beat cop to sheriff owe it to the people they serve to do their job..." I could be here all day. "...they owe it to the people they serve to do their job..." "...and enforce what's on the books. Sheriffs don't..." Sheriffs, sheriffs don't let murderers go because they think..."
Okay, if we cannot have order downstairs, we're going to have to suspend comments. This is not, we need to be respectful of the speaker, and we're not allowed, we are not able to hear what she is saying, so please be respectful.
Sheriffs don't let murderers go because they think there is a chance they may win a future appeal. And the last time we checked, a sheriff is neither a judge nor a magistrate with the authority to determine whether a law is unconstitutional. Yes, Sheriff, you run the county jail, but it is current Illinois law that should guide you when deciding who gets locked up and who doesn't. Not, not your personal politics.
Ma'am, could you identify yourself? Thank you. Tina Nassos. Tina? No, okay. Melanie Bottom. Melanie Bottom. Oh. Sorry. So busy looking.
Hello. I am an 11-year resident of DuPage County, previously lived in Newtown, Connecticut. I am also the daughter, spouse, and granddaughter of veterans. I have a pretty deep-seated feeling on how I feel about gun rights, but I kind of don't feel like that's what's at play. What we need to look at is if the sheriff has the ability to, on his own, decide what he wants to enforce and not enforce. I think he does not have that right, and I think we need to make sure that he knows that he is to enforce the laws of Illinois, not decide what he wants to and doesn't want to enforce.
I stand in support of Sheriff Mendrick. He has done an outstanding job keeping our communities safe. He has also worked very hard turning around the lives of those incarcerated in his jail. When Mendrick started, heroin and criminality recidivism rates were 90 and 75%, respectively. They are now down to 18 and 15%, respectively. The chairman herself just acknowledged that DuPage is one of the safest states in the country. Let's keep it that way. It is remarkable and hypocritical of the chairwoman and her Democrat state legislative colleagues and the Democrat congressional delegation to politically assault Sheriff Mendrick for his thoughtful and reasoned position that HB 5471 is unconstitutional. After Friday's decision by an Illinois judge to issue a TRO on the law, it is likely that the law is unconstitutional. The DuPage chairman herself has passed numerous laws that she probably thought were constitutional, but they aren't. In 2013, she voted for pension reform that in 2015 was judged unconstitutional. In 2017, she voted for SB 31, a law requiring Illinois officials to not enforce federal immigration laws. For a decade, she voted for unbalanced budgets that are unconstitutional. And the chairman, along with her fellow state... And the chairman, along with her fellow state legislators, have passed numerous laws without the required constitutional requirement of a single subject matter or the requirement to read a bill on three separate days before passage. And that particular point, both of those were made in the downstate judge's decision to basically put the TRO in place, saying that it's unconstitutional. The chairman commented that you do not want to choose which laws you comply with in the state of Illinois. You, yourself, your party, have decided to selectively enforce laws. Let's face it, 5 million illegal immigrants have crossed our border that is opposed to our laws. If you think this is about keeping people safe, I need to remind you that the chairwoman sponsored and voted for HB 3447, which decriminalized possession of enough fentanyl to kill 1,500 people. She does not care about public safety. Everybody wants the violence to stop, but taking away the rights of legal gun owners while Cook County refuses to prosecute criminals with illegal guns is just irrational. And it's telling that this law that we're talking about right now allows gun manufacturers in Illinois to continue to make and sell guns that are unbanned for other Illinoisans to actually sell or possess. So I guess it really isn't the guns, is it?
Matthew Etara?
This is Mike. Please speak up. Can you hear me up there? Well, these people can't hear me. Well, just talk loud, don't worry, sir. I promise you, just talk loud. I paid for this mic. I'll make it short. This controversy was resolved by the Supreme Court in 1803, 220 years ago. And they said, in the case of Barbary versus Madison, "All laws, rules, and practices which are repugnant to the Constitution are null and void." Null and void. This rule is null and void. The sheriff's doing the exactly right thing on behalf of we, the people, the people who established the Constitution of the United States. And he is a wonderful person. Now, you have given us a great opportunity, county board members and other politicians in the Democrat Party, because what you have just done is you've established James Mendrick as the next governor of Illinois.
Yes. Has he finished? Matthew Etara?
Good morning. Regarding your statement towards Sheriff Mendrick and the confusion in support of this law package as well as the Safety Act, I simply do not understand how the board has such a lack of common sense regarding the effective means of community safety. I've watched the board meeting with Mayor Ratuner. I've read through the data on gun violence, community safety, red flag laws that the police failed in Highland Park and other shootings. Everybody agrees that mass shootings are horrible and unacceptable. Lawful firearm owners are not against keeping guns from criminals and the mentally ill. Please explain to me how infringing on law-abiding citizens, God-given, unable rights is going to stop criminals from committing such crimes? Criminals do not submit to background checks and take firearm safety training. Criminals do not see a gun-free zone sign and put their gun away. They are attracted to them. When you see the majority of Illinois state sheriffs stand up for the Constitution, do you in the board not stop for a moment and wonder, why? And is something wrong with these laws? The emotions of Highland Park and other shootings, as tragic as they are, do not validate violating the Constitution, which is a higher authority than overreaching state law. Furthermore, DuPage County Jail is filled with a majority of criminals from Cook County. And Chicago's gun violence, the majority of guns are from out of state. How is the Safety Act or HB 5471 that was entitled Insurance Code Public Adjusters going to fix this? And why would these laws hide them in a package like this? Does that not raise questions? Has anyone from Illinois contacted the local sheriff to ask them how to best protect their communities? Are they not the experts in this? As a law-abiding citizen in DuPage County, I find my questions and points to be fair and valid. I want my community and family to be safe from criminals and the mentally ill, too. However, nothing this state legislature, legislature, Governor Pritzker, or the county board is doing accomplishes that. In fact, it does the opposite. In closing, Sheriff Mendrick is not violating his oath, nor are the other sheriffs. They're upholding it to the United States Constitution and the people that elected them. All elected officials in this state and the country who do not support law-abiding citizens' constitutional rights and freedoms should resign.
Mike Malvi? Mike Malvi? Rose Kunz?
Good morning. I'm here on something completely different. I'm just here for rezoning. My name is Rose Kunzie. I reside in unincorporated Winfield and oppose the requested rezoning change of Carey Farms. Recent comments during the Zoning Board of Appeals and Development Committee indicated there was a trend for commercial development along Roosevelt Road. Using the petitioner's red zone exhibit shown on page 531 of the meeting packet, and maybe that can be displayed, please, and information from the county's GIS, I'd like to show no such trend is occurring. Between Gary's Mill Road on the west and Indian Knoll Road on the east, there are a total of 10 parcels. At least two of these have homes on them clearly visible from Roosevelt Road. Beginning at Gary's Mill Road as a western boundary, the county's GIS shows an existing commercial C-class property on the corner. The next three properties to the east show ownership by Trillium Company. Two of the three are listed as commercial C-class properties and one is property lease L-class. There is no apparent activity on the Trillium parcels. To the east of the Trillium land is an R-class residential parcel, followed by Sheehan's four properties. The easternmost of these four parcels is the one referred to in the petitioner's request. Interestingly, none of the four have a current classification noted on the county's GIS. The 10th and last parcel abuts Indian Knoll Road and is owned by the county with an E-property Exemption classification. It is surrounded by residential zoning. I believe the red zone exhibit is misleading as it relates to classifications and business uses. When the county board approved the rezoning and construction of 84 homes at Holti's Trillium Farm, it reinforced the established trend for residential, not commercial development in this area. Many unincorporated homeowners chose their properties in large part due to the rural nature of the area. The county's residential R zoning is clearly defined. It states, "Single-family residence district is established to preserve and maintain existing single-family areas of the county and permit the continued development of residential uses, primarily in areas where public utilities are not readily available. B2 zoning provides for wide-ranging business uses, some of which, in my opinion, would be unsuitable to be near existing homes and neighborhoods. Please don't allow the glare of the red zone to obscure your view of the surrounding yellow, light, and bright yellow parcels. Those yellows are not just colors, they represent our homes. I think we're all familiar with the quote, 'If it looks like a duck and quacks like a duck, it's a duck.' Well, in this case, if it looks like a neighborhood and homes are present, it's residential. My husband and I agree with the Zoning Board of Appeals and urge the county board to deny the Carey Farms rezoning request. Thank you."
Molly Kremsky?
Hi, my name is Molly Kremsky. I wish that we could all be in the same room because there's awesome energy down here. I grew up in Downers Grove, but I now reside in Kendall County, where we have and will retain the right to bear arms, thanks to Sheriff Barrett. The passing of HB 5471 was illegal in both substance and procedure. There is currently a restraining order in place because our corrupt state legislature attempted to transform an amusement ride safety act into the most aggressive gun ban in the country. It is apparent, now more than ever, why it is mandatory that our constitutionally-protected right to keep and bear arms not be infringed. Sheriff Mendrick took an oath to support the U.S. Constitution. Thank God he has the integrity to uphold that oath. Thank God he willingly inserted himself between the 920-some-thousand residents of DuPage County and the corrupt legislature and executor of Illinois. How dare anyone suggest that he is anything less than an American hero? We will never forfeit our right to keep and bear arms in order to protect ourselves from the very same coalition that is now attempting to disarm us. America will be secured as a free state. We will not wait for the court's decision. The Constitution ruled on HB 5471 200 years ago. Even if a modern-day ruling reveals that the courts also belong to that same corrupt coalition, we will still not surrender our weapons. Be careful about picking a fight with Mendrick. When you attack him for upholding the Constitution, you attack the very essence of what it means to be American. It is a fight that you will not win. You might feel like you're winning... You might feel like you're winning for a while when the media pumps out its propaganda, but there are 94 counties full of people who still understand what it means to be American. We won't surrender. We will show up, and America will remain one nation, indivisible, under the headship of Christ, with liberty from our oppressors and justice for all. God really is going to bless America right after he tears down this corrupt regime. We need to walk in expectation of his coming glory and in constant repentance because of the judgment that will precede that glory. I thank you for your service to this community, and I thank you for allowing me to speak, and I urge you to take these voices seriously and allow Sheriff Mendrick to be an example of what it looks like to truly serve the people.
Well, that concludes our public comment for today. Thank you all. We respect your opinions. Anyone who didn't have the opportunity to speak, please know that your comments will be recorded for the record, and we will take a five-minute break. Thank you all so much for coming back. Okay, we are going to move on to number seven, item seven, and the consent agenda. Okay, thank you for that. Okay, we're going to start with A, DuPage County Board Regular Meeting, Tuesday, December 13th, 2022; B, DuPage County Board Regular Meeting, Tuesday, January 10th, 2022; C, 3, 23, oh, still having a hard time with that. Okay. C, Payment of Claims, 152023 Auto Debit Pay List; D, Payment of Claims, 162023 Pay List; E, Payment of Claims, 1102023 Pay List; F, Payment of Claims, 1132023 Pay List; G, Wire Transfers, 1132023 IDOR Wire Transfer; H, Wire Transfers, 1132023 COVEL Wire Transfer; I, Consent Item, Change Orders to Variance Contracts as Specified in the Attached Packet; J, Consent Item, Monthly Receipts and Disbursements, December 2022; K, Consent Item, Recorder State of Revenue for December 2022; L, Consent Item, Monthly Report of Investments and Deposits, December 2022. All in favor? Motion carries. On to item number eight, County Board, Member Childress.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move on CBR 004723 to the appointment of Robert J. Wagner to the Salt Creek Sanitary District.
Okay, roll call, please.
Childress?
Yes.
Covert? Desart?
Yes.
Eckoff? Evans?
Yes.
Galassi? Garcia?
Aye.
Guston? Krajewski? LaPlante? Ozog? Rutledge?
Aye.
Schworzy? Tornatore?
Aye.
You?
Aye.
Zay?
Aye.
Cahill?
Aye.
And Chaplin?
I'm most proud about this one, too. I really liked to make this motion. I move on CBR 004823 to the appointment of NAU to the emergency telephone system.
Most favorable?
You can go downstairs, Members A. And we'll hear you from the podium down there. Okay, leave is granted. Thank you, Member Childress.
You're welcome. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And on to item number nine, Finance, and Member Chaplin.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair. By way of committee update, first of all, I want to thank you for your comments this morning regarding the Sheriff's Department and how we are funding the Sheriff's Department. In Finance, I did talk a little bit about some questions that people had brought up regarding what the, you know, any financial ramifications that we could do for the sheriff and explained, you know, just like you, that public safety is important, we don't want to do that. But I did want to stress that I know the sheriff has been mentioning that he is down on his staff and that that has nothing to do with the county board funding. The county board for our 2023 budget did include a headcount of 507 employees. Our headcount up from the 2022 budget, which we had a headcount of 502. So it's my understanding that the sheriff's current headcount is around 467, so, you know, but we are doing everything that we can to help the sheriff with his hiring practices, including, you know, giving hefty raises, and we also included sign-on bonuses in our 2023 budget. So I just wanted to make it clear that it's nothing that we're doing on that side that's causing that issue. And with that, I move approval of FIR 004523, Additional Appropriation for the County Clerk GIS Fund Company 1100 Accounting Unit 2910 $5,334.
It has been moved in second. Roll call, please.
Chaplin?
Aye.
Childress? Covert? Desart?
Aye.
Eckoff? Evans?
Aye.
Galassi? Garcia? Guston? Krajewski? LaPlante? Ozog? Rutledge? Schworzy? Tornatore? You?
Aye.
Zay? And Cahill.
Member Chaplin?
Thank you. I move approval of FIR 004623, Resolution Approval of the Amendment to Resolution FIR 028322 for an amended grant agreement with the FMC and auditorium for the use of ARPA funds. This is an ARPA item.
Leave is granted, Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR 005023, Resolution Budget Transfers 12423, Various Companies and Accounting Units. I move approval of FIR 005123 Resolution, Authorization to Transfer $58,115 in the budget to the coroner, to the county coroner for fiscal year 2022.
Leave is granted, Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR 005223 Resolution, Authorization to Transfer $514,519, or $415,519 in the budget to the county clerk elections for fiscal year 2022.
Leave is granted.
Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Member Chaplin. And we will move on to Animal Services and Member Kuduski.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move on ASP 0046-22, or 23, Recommendation for the Approval of a Contract to IDEX Distribution Inc. for the Purchase of SNAP Tests Outside Laboratory and Radiology Consolidation Services Mountain Attic, $834,489.64.
It has been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Ruttledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
You.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Cahill.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Childress.
Aye.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Galassi.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
And Guston.
Aye.
Okay, on to item 11, Development, and Member Tornatori.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move approval on DCO 7-23 Ordinance Zoning 2249, VFW to approve conditional use to allow VFW parking lot and rail drive to be used as outside parking, a conditional use to allow post-owned operated trailers and RVs to be stored. This was approved at CBA and Development.
It has been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Madam Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry, Member Eckoff.
I'm short.
And then, Members A.
I just wanted to thank our staff, the VFW, and the neighbors for coming to an agreement on this. This has been an issue that's been in the neighborhood for about two years now, and I think they came together and produced a plan that hopefully is going to satisfy all the concerns by including additional landscaping, a fence around the RVs, limitation on the number of RVs that can be placed in or on the property, and the fact that there's not supposed to be any sleeping in those RVs. So all of that's included into our ordinance. I know that the staff is not going to give a permit to build until an official plan is submitted to them. I would only ask that if no progress has been made in the next three months, that staff get back to us, because I think it's got to be rectified one way or the other. If they're still leaving the RVs on there, but they're not moving forward with their plan, then I think we've got to continue on with a litigation that's already been started between the county and the VFW.
Members A.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also want to thank our staff. I met with Wheaton VFW. You know, it's very interesting to meet with our veterans. This VFW home in Wheaton was built over 100 years ago by World War I veterans. They're there. I know they have issues with the RVs, but part of the VFW's mission is when veterans are traveling throughout the country, they have the right to come and stop, a friendly place to stop and park their RV for the night. And what their staff says, most of these people who comes to Wheaton VFW are then going to Heinz VA for services at the hospital. So they've had a lot there. The parking issue came up because Wheaton Bowl went out of business. That's where Wheaton North used to park their excess cars. With Wheaton, with Wheaton Bowl going out of business, they didn't have a spot. They worked to deal with the VFW to park those cars there. Obviously, it's only during the school days, there's a limit on that. And again, the VFW and the neighbors have come together on this. I think this is a good agreement. It's not in District 6, but it's across the street from District 6, which, you know, that's a good thing. So again, thank you to our staff for working with these people and Development Committee for getting this through.
Members A, Members A, Members Schworzy. Sorry, you don't even look a lot.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just, I'm going to speak. I'm going to speak in support of the VFW in this ordinance as well. As most people know, VFWs are very, very supportive of the community that they're housed in, and this one has, is right at the top of the list. They've been very, very supportive for, you know, nonprofits and helping do fundraisers to help the community many times. Personal experience, we, my firefighter union had held three spaghetti dinners there for rates tens of thousands of dollars. They gave us the building for no charge. They let us use their kitchen for no charge, and they continue to do that. We've been doing it for decades, so thank you.
Member Ozog.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, Navy Mom here, VFW Mom, do want to point out that it's important to respect the neighbors as well. This is my district, District 4. And in terms of this agreement, there is not to be any overnight activity. So not sleeping there was definitely, or having trailers in residence and actually staying there for undetermined amounts of time was definitely part of the neighbors' issue. So this agreement solves a deal of problems. It takes the Wheaton North students onto the gravel lot, not in the neighborhood, but I just hope that this is adhered to with mutual respect, the neighbors and the VFW. Thank you.
Okay, roll call, please.
Tornatori.
Aye.
You.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Cahill.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Childress.
Yes.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Galassi.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
And Guston.
Okay, Member Tornatori.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move approval of DCO 8-23 Ordinance Zoning 2256, Vermin and Levatina Enterprises to approve zoning relief for a rezoned from R4 to B1 to allow a climate-controlled self-storage facility, a conditional use for a climate-controlled self-storage facility, a variation to increase floor barrier ratio, variation to reduce the front yard setback, variation to reduce the south interior side setback, and a variance to reduce the front yard landscaping setback from 20 to 10 feet to allow tents parking places. There was a formal objection by the Village of Bensonville, which will now require a supermajority, or 14 votes, to approve this matter.
Okay, questions? Member Cahill.
Yes. I want to speak on behalf of the Village of Bensonville. The Village of Bensonville and the Village of Wooddale is committed to maintaining the residential integrity of this subject property. They're very much against this zoning from residential to commercial, and I support that because one of the things I ran on was to support the residential integrity of community. And this is a rezoning that would not fit with the school behind it, with the pool behind it, the Park District, the Village of Wooddale joins in, the Village of Bensonville and the Park District opposing this rezoning, and I support that. Thank you.
Members A.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This property is not new to the stormwater staff and myself. The seller of this property was, had a violation in 2015 for impact to a critical wetland. We approved a variance for the mitigation strategy. There have been no attempts towards resolving this violation in the last eight years. The mitigation now is three to one because it was a critical wetland. Our staff looked at it and shows the outline of the area where the land is located, but does not acknowledge the three-to-one wetland mitigation as required. The site plan does not also acknowledge detention required for the development. So again, I don't think they should benefit off of this. We've worked with this owner of this property, and over eight years, they've done nothing to meet any of the county's standards or get this property properly brought back for cutting down the critical wetland. So I will not be voting in favor of this. Thank you.
Member Childress.
This is kind of painful for me because there's a number of board members here that are brand-new. This has been going on for 10 years. So I've been out trying to educate myself on the process and what's going on, and we have been speaking with both sides. I don't feel comfortable making some blind vote that's going to affect the community and have effects of millions of dollars. So I'm moving that we table this for two weeks. I don't think that it's too much to ask to get two weeks to allow the new board members to study what's going on and then ask them to make a vote, especially since it's in my district. I've had conversations with the mayor, I've had conversations with the supervisor, and I've also had conversations with the other side. So again, I'm still in the process of gathering information and would like to have some time to come back in a couple of weeks and cast a vote.
Okay, discussion. Member Kuduski.
Thank you. Well, we have this zoning ordinance, and then we have another one that's coming on just after that, and they're both, you know, they've both taken account of the sound factors. I sit on the Development Committee. This particular one was approved 7-0 by the Zoning Board of Appeals and approved 5-1 at our Development Committee. The other one that we'll see next was denied, 7-0 at the ZBA, but also approved, though, at the Development Committee. So I think just to give people some more time to understand, and look at the transcripts if they haven't seen the ZBA where all the evidence was presented, and I know Paul, Paul, are you sitting there? They did come years ago, didn't they, for residential development? And Bensonville denied it?
So this developer has, even though the property is unincorporated, this developer has been working with the Village of Bensonville staff. It never came to a formal vote before the Village of Bensonville, but they've been working with staff on several different types of development, including one residential.
And that's one of the factors we look at, but there's been how many, at least four different things that have come up over the last 10 years they've tried to put on that property?
Four or five, yes.
So, but again, just to give people time to see, so I'm supporting and made a motion to support table it, to maybe the Members Childress, to the next meeting, which would be February 14th. I don't know if you want to add that to your motion, but to the table to the February 14th, which is the next time we meet.
Absolutely.
Okay, take a roll call on that. Member Desart, I'm sorry, Member Desart.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say that I appreciate the conversations with the Villages of Bensonville and Wooddale, and I will be, I agree with Member Cahill, and I will be joining her in a no vote. Thank you.
Okay, so on to the motion. Take a roll call, please. Motion to table till February 14th.
Childress.
Yes.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
No.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Galassi.
No.
Garcia.
Aye.
Guston.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Ruttledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
No.
Tornatori.
No.
You.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Cahill.
No.
And Chaplin.
Aye.
Okay, motion to table has passed. So, Member Tornatori.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before I move on to item C with your permission and the leave of the body, I'd like to read a memo that I received yesterday from the State's Attorney's Office regarding item DCO 9-23. It's a memorandum that states to members of the Board, this memorandum is to inform you that earlier today, the City of West Chicago filed a lawsuit in the 18th Judicial Circuit against Carey Farms LLC. The county was not named as a defendant in this suit. At noon today, Judge Bonham Wheaton issued a temporary restraining order which prohibited Carey Farms from pursuing their petition for the DuPage County Board. This prohibition appears to relate to speaking before the Board, advocating for the position, and lobbying County Board members with regards to the petition. At approximately 3:30 PM today, that was yesterday, the DuPage County State's Attorney's Office became aware of the order. I have spoken with the petitioner's counsel, and he is informing that the petitioner is not seeking to withdraw the petition or alter the status quo of the petition in any fashion. Notably, this court order does not prohibit the County Board from considering the petition. The Board should not take this court order into consideration when coming to a decision on the zoning petition because it is not part of the record of the ZBA proceedings. The county derives its zoning police powers from the Zoning Enabling Act codified in 55 ILCS 5/5-12001 and Sec Order. These statutes provide that the County Board acts as a legislative body when it issues a decision in regards to a rezoning petition. 55 ILCS 5/5-12012.1. Section 12012.1 of the county's code further states, the principles of substantive and procedural due process apply at all stages of the decision-making and review of all zoning decisions. The Board should not consider the absence of information outside of the record. Due to the issuance of the court order, petitioner cannot appear to speak on behalf of the petition without violating the court's order. This Board is left with three options. It can, in no particular order, grant the petition, deny the petition, or table the petition. As the City of West Chicago has filed a formal objection with the Board, the petition requires a 75% supermajority of the membership of the Board, or 14 votes, to pass. A vote to deny, which requires a simple majority, or vote to approve, which gains less than the 14 required votes, constitutes a denial of the petition. A motion to table requires a simple majority to table the measure to a date certain. This memorandum should not be construed as suggesting a specific course of action or advocating for a specific outcome. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me. That being said, I would now move to approve DCO 9-23 Ordinance Zoning 22 Carey Farms, approving a rezoning from R2 Single Family Residential to B2 General Business. R2 single-family residential to B2 general business. If the County Board seeks to approve this zoning relief, it will require a 3/4 majority, or 14 votes, based on the resolution of written protest submitted by the City of West Chicago.
Second. Okay, roll call, please. Whoop, discussion, okay. Member Rutledge.
Thank you, Chair Conroy. I've had a lot of conversations about this. I, I think that Dr. Sheehan has a wonderful vision for his property, and I think in our United States, we are pretty focused on capitalism. And I believe that his right in owning that property that is on a very busy thoroughfare with business all around, he should have that right if, if that's the case. What I'm, the quiet part that nobody's saying out loud is, I don't think this is a zoning issue as much as I think this is a cannabis issue. The state of Illinois has legalized cannabis. We all agree that illicit drug use is something that we don't want in our communities, but now we have a vehicle to rein that in, yet we're still resisting that, which pushes people to continue to illicit drug use. Some of the things I looked at yesterday when I was considering my comments are, in the state of Illinois, there are 137,138 medicinal patients. And the things that cannabis has been proven to help are chronic pain, anorexia, autism, IBF, migraines, osteoarthritis, neuropathy, polycystic kidney disease, and, you know, a variety of other things that this drug can help, as opposed to a liquor store, which has absolutely no redeeming value for consumption. So, for most.
Clearly, some of our members disagree with you.
Yes, yes. Medicinal use, thank you, thank you. So, I guess that this, this is the first cannabis issue that we have, that's been brought to our County Board after we had decided to allow it in our unincorporated areas. And I want to hear what everybody's going to say on this issue today, but I hope that this is a battle that's not going to happen every time we are faced with allowing a dispensary in an unincorporated area. I think that the time has come, and we need to allow what the voters and the state government have said we can do. Thank you.
Members A.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, this isn't development, this is about zoning. This property owner has a pre-annexation agreement with the Village, with the City of West Chicago. He's breaking that. This is zoned residential. We just put in residential a little over a year ago, right down the street from here. West Chicago's against it, Winfield's against it. The Westwind Homeowners Association, which you heard the one lady speak, speak today, huge, one of the largest in our district, is against it. We want to talk about zoning and talk, but you brought up cannabis. We okayed it. District 6 has over 80% of those locations. Why do I need another one? There's plenty of business locations on Roosevelt Road this person can go to. This breaks a pre-annexation agreement. West Chicago's filed suit on, on them. He's breaking his deal with West Chicago. We've heard Dr. Sheehan talk for the last eight months, and his story has changed from week to week to week. This is an end run around it. We shouldn't put up with it. The people, the homeowners in that area don't want it. There's plenty of locations all over District 6 that have this. We don't need to change, change the zoning and put another location here close to a residential neighborhood. Thank you.
Member Covert.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question was answered, actually. So, thank you.
Member Kuduski.
Yeah, thank you. I just had one question from staff. But first of all, we did hear about the residential and the Development Committee. It was nice to see the map up there. But the owner who sold the property that then became developed as residential did keep the frontage on Roosevelt Road, and it's zone B2. Everything in the west of this property is zone B2, and this has nothing to do with cannabis. This is a rezone to, from R to B2, and there's an office across the street on Roosevelt. So the trend on Roosevelt is B2. And again, it's not the business that potentially could go in there. What if, there was some testimony that I read that talked about wedding venues and some other things potentially, but it doesn't really matter, B2. But my question, either for Paul or the Deputy Clerk, did the formal request get, from West Chicago, get filed with the Clerk's Office?
Yes, the formal resolution and objection was filed with the Clerk's Office.
Okay, that is my question. Thank you.
Okay, Member Chaplin.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. So, last week in development, when we spoke on this, we did talk in depth about the annexation agreement. I might call you back up here. But from what I understand, that, the county is not bound by that annexation agreement, correct? And it's really, it's, it's, the county really, we have no, we're not bound by that annexation agreement at all, correct?
That's correct.
So, yes. Thank you.
Anyone else?
May I be?
Yes.
Be heard. Thank you.
Member Tornatori.
I generally don't like to comment as Chair of the Development Committee, but just in response to a couple of things, I, I respect that Dr. Sheehan's tenacity, and as I've well dealt with this for quite a while. But just to be clear, for me at least, this isn't about cannabis. And we were very clear when we established the zoning entitlement regarding cannabis in unincorporated DuPage County, this to be in commercial areas, not residential. This is residential, and while I appreciate what Dr. Sheehan is trying to do to protect his investment, this is essentially an end around of what, what our zoning ordinance is. Also regarding the City of West Chicago, I received a letter, perhaps everybody else did, from the mayor, specifically stating that there was unanimous resolution opposing this. He also states, it's come to my attention that at the Development Committee meeting during discussion of zoning application, a County Board member represented that I had indicated, that being the mayor, that but for the eventual use of the property, the cannabis dispensary, should it get rezoning approval, the city would be okay with the change to B2 zoning classification. I have never made such a statement, and to my knowledge, no member of West Chicago City Council has ever made such a statement. Our pre-annexation agreement dictates the future zoning of the property as residential, and any business use of that location would be in violation of the pre-annexation agreement. They further go on to say that they were going to, City of West Chicago, that is, would protect their rights. So while the pre-annexation agreement is between the owner of the property and the City of West Chicago, it's certainly something I'm going to take into consideration as being a formal document that has some impact on us at the county. But more importantly, it's not what our zoning entitlement was when we drafted it, about being in residential areas. We've got homeowners and people who live in the area who are opposed to it. There's a variety of other reasons for it. And again, while I respect Dr. Sheehan, the reality of it, this is a zoning issue. It's not about cannabis dispensary. I think if they were going to put a 7-Eleven there, it'd have the same issues. So for that reason, I'm going to be voting no. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Member Tornatori. Roll call. Oh, Member You.
I also took a look through the evidence, the record for this motion. And I just want to say that something that the City of West Chicago had written stuck out to me, where it stated neither the city nor the owners of said property wanted the subject property to be zoned for business use. And in addition, one of the LaSalle factors talks about the trend of the development, and as of 2019, the redevelopment of Planters Palate Landscape Nursery, which became Trillium Farms, an 84-unit, single-family subdivision, which is right next to Carey Farms, again, shows to me that this was really zoned not for business use but for residential. And I'm going through the rest of the LaSalle factors. You know, the other things that stick out to me are the public need for the proposed use, and the thoroughness with which this municipality has planned and zoned its land use. So for these reasons, I will be voting against.
Okay, anybody else? Roll call, please.
Tornatori.
No.
You.
No.
Zay.
No.
Cahill.
No.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Childress.
No.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Ekoff.
No.
Evans.
No.
Galassi.
No.
Garcia.
Aye.
Guston.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
No.
Ozog.
Yes.
Rutledge.
Yes.
Schorzy.
No.
And Kuduski. Five voting aye, thirteen voting no.
And the motion fails.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That concludes my report.
Okay, on to item number 12, environment, and Member Rutledge.
Thank you, Chair Conroy. No report today in, because of time spent already.
Okay, thank you. We look forward to your next report. Okay, on to item 13, and Member Schorzy.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. I move on item ETSR 923, acceptance of the Illinois State Fiscal Year 23, Next Generation 911 Expenses Grant Program in the amount of $1,521,663 on the exam.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Schorzy.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
You.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Cahill.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Childress.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Ekoff.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Galassi.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Guston.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
And Rutledge.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Member Schorzy, and on to item 14, and Member Schorzy.
Thank you very much, thank you. With regards to committee update, I got a couple of things. First, myself, Vice Chair Garcia, along with our Finance Chair and Vice Chair, met with staff of Human Services, along with the Finance and the State's Attorney's Office to talk about recreating the $1 million Human Services Fund. So we had our first meeting, we talked about it. You know, there's certainly going to be some complexities involved, but just an update that we are planning on meeting again. We'll continue to meet so we can iron something out there. So, and then on a second note, DuPage Care Center balloon fundraiser. As we all know, our next board meeting is on February 14th, which is also Valentine's Day. So each year, we invite the public to join in sharing some warm wishes with our DuPage Care Center residents. We all recognize how difficult the past few years have been with COVID. They don't, they haven't had, well, there's been times during COVID when they don't even get to have family come visit, and it's impacted their quality of life. So I will hope you will, all will join me in letting the Care Center residents know how often we are thinking about them. You can do this by purchasing balloons to be delivered to our residents. Balloon greetings can be ordered online at dpccfoundation.org, dpccfoundation.org. The Care Center Foundation is hosting this annual fundraiser, not only to spread a bit of love and warm wishes, but also to raise money for programs that enhance the recreational opportunities for our residents. And I know in the past, they've allowed board members to come in and help fill balloons, because there are quite a few of them. But because of COVID outbreak conditions, that's not going to be happening this, this year. So apologies to all of you that would have volunteered to go do that. But I would encourage all of you to get your balloons ordered, get it in early, and visit the Care Center Foundation website for more information. And again, let's get this done before February 14th, dpccfoundation.org. So, thank you very much for that. And on to business here. I move to approve item HSR 4023, a resolution for the 2023 Annual Action Plan DuPage County Consortium First Reading, acceptance of the 2023 Annual Action Plan Element Comment Period of the 2024 Consolidated Plan for Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Home Investment Partnership and Emergency Solutions Grant, ESG Programs to Qualify and Receive the Department of Housing and Urban Development Grant Funds.
It has been moved and seconded. Roll call, please. Oh, I'm sorry, Member Rutledge.
And this is not about this agenda item. It's about the latex balloons. And as Environmental Chair, I have talked about this in the past, that the see-through balloons are not as problematic as the latex ones are, because latex lives on forever. So, the first thing I would say is, I, I so want to do something lovely for the residents of our Care Center for Valentine's Day. I'm sure it brightens their day. I have asked in the past that we not do latex balloons, because not only are latex balloons horrible for our environment, helium is a dwindling resource, it's nonrenewable, it's used in medical devices like MRI machines. So we can't keep filling up latex and, with helium that may one day be all gone. So, maybe a little plant, or something like that, that we can do. But I'll ask that we consider another way to, to honor them on Valentine's Day. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Member Rutledge. A very valid concern. Okay.
And I'll respond to that. Let's talk, and we'll, we'll look at doing something possibly different next year. So, thank you.
Okay, okay, roll call, please.
Schorzy.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
You.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Cahill.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Childress.
Yes.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Ekoff.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Galassi.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Guston.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
And Rutledge.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Let's talk, and we'll, we'll look at doing something possibly different next year. So, thank you.
Okay, okay, roll call, please.
Schorzy.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
You.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Cahill.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Childress.
Yes.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Ekoff.
Okay, Member Evans.
Thank you. I would like to move on JPSR 003823, Resolution for the Substantial Amendment to the 2021 Action Plan, the Fourth Overall Amendment for Allocation of Home American Rescue Plan Funds.
Thank you.
Leave is granted.
I move on item HSP 4723, Recommendation for the Approval of a Contract Purchase Order to Family Shelter Service to Provide Advocacy Services to Victims of Domestic Violence. This contract covers the period of December 1st, 2022, through November 30, 2023, for community services for a contract total amount not to exceed $85,000.
Leave is granted.
Thank you. I move on item HSCO 723, Amendment to Contract 52480001, Serve Issued to Lynne Gas and Equipment to Furnish and Deliver Oxygen, Helium, and Carbon Dioxide for the period of June 1st, 2021, through May 31st, 2023, to Increase Incumbrence in the Amount of $4,000 to Cover Purchases Through the End of the Contract. For a new purchase order in a total amount not to exceed $26,332.
Leave is granted, Member Schorzy.
And finally, I move to approve item Authorization for Overnight Travel, Weatherization Assessor to Attend Energy Auditor Training for Certification in Champaign, Illinois, from March 12th, 2023 through March 17th, 2023. Expenses to include lodging, miscellaneous expenses, and per diem for the approximate total amount of $1,801.25.
Leave is granted. And on to item number 15, Judicial and Public Safety. Member Evans.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to move on JPSR 003823, A Resolution for Additional Appropriation for the Probation Services Fees Fund in the Amount of $135,000.
Second. It has been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Evans.
Aye.
Galassi.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Guston.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schorzy.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
You.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Cahill.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Childress.
Yes.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
And Ekoff.
Okay, Member Evans.
Thank you. I would like to move on JPSR 003823, Resolution for the Acceptance of an Extension Time for the U.S. Department of Justice Office of Community Oriented Policy Services Law Enforcement, Mental Health, and Wellness Act 2020 Grant Cooperative Agreement in the Amount of $25,000.
Leave is granted, Member Evans.
Thank you. Oh, wait, I've got one more. Okay, I would like to move on JPSP 004523, Recommendation for the Approval of a Contract Purchase Order to Northeast DuPage Family and Youth Services to Provide Services to Youths Who Are at Risk of Domestic Violence and Trauma for the Period February 1st, 2023, through January 31st, 2024, for a Contract Total Amount not to Exceed $36,000.
Leave is granted. Thank you, Member Evans.
Thank you.
And on to item number 16, Legislative, and Member Desart.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Because I was not able to be there in person today, I've asked Vice Chair Jim Zay to complete the report and the committee update. Thank you.
Okay, Member Zay.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I hope the Chair Desart feels better. It's probably a great day to be sick and not be here. The committee report, the state agenda helps us to inform our legislators as to the county's goals for the session, upcoming session, and also to guide our lobbyists. As Springfield's session progresses, the committee will present a list of specific bills every couple of weeks to the legislative committee to consider and take official positions on. With that, I move on LEGR 34-23, Adoption of the County's 2023 State Legislative Program.
Roll call, please.
Ooh, wait.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm going to amend too.
Do you want to do the amendment, or have?
Yes, I was going to do the amendment.
Okay, go ahead.
I am going to move, I put it on your desk, to add some of the items that we had put in in October. Under Public Safety, the one item is DuPage County will seek additional legislation to increase penalties for the offenses of armed habitual criminals and unlawful use of a weapon, legislation to increase penalties for possession of ghost guns to a felony level offense, and legislation to increase penalties for unlawful sale of a ghost gun to a Class III felony.
Okay, discussion. Member Covert.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had a really quick question, two questions about the allocation, allocate a fair share of income tax revenues in this agenda. In 2017, when the General Assembly reduced the LGDF payments to local governments by 10%, did that include the further reduction of allocation of funding to our probation department and public schools? And second question, does this increase have any indirect impact on county tax programs?
Regarding LGDF, it didn't affect our probation reimbursement. That's out of a separate pot, which has been funded. And the 10% isn't 10% of the revenues, it's of the general pot was produced. So, we're back up to 6.1% of individual income tax. And so DuPage mayors and managers have made it their top priority.
so, DuPage mayors and managers have made it their top priority to try and get back to that 10% total. I don't believe school districts get LGDF. It's just municipalities and counties. When the income tax came in in 1969, there was an agreement, and Chair Conroy probably knows this better than me, that municipalities and counties would not do their own income tax, and that there would be a share agreement. And so, the local governments would get 10% of the pot of total income tax revenues, which went fine until there were some budget issues, maybe, I forget how many years ago. And then they started holding back a portion of that 10% to municipalities and counties.
In the future, the funding that was reduced for the probation department, would that gap be filled again?
Probation is a separate pot of funds. It's not LGDF. And I can double check with Suzanne Armstrong, but I believe they are funding probation salaries. But there's only a certain amount that's allowed. It's not 100% of all probation salaries. It's certain positions and a certain amount. But I believe it is being funded by the state, past couple of years.
All right. Thank you.
Do we have any more comments or questions about the amendment?
Yeah, on the amendment. So, it's my understanding that currently the legislation, for your first offense, you're charged with a Class A misdemeanor, and any offense after that is a Class III felony for subsequent offenses. So, we want to take out the, we want to take out, so you want them to amend it to remove the class demeanor, Class A misdemeanor for first offense, and only have it as a Class III felony? Because right now, it reads, anybody with a ghost gun lacking a serial number will be charged with a Class A misdemeanor for the first offense and a Class III felony for subsequent offenses.
Yes, I think that's what we're talking about.
Okay. So, then do we have to amend this to remove that? Or, I don't know. Or to increase penalties for offenses, to increase legislation for ghosts, to level offense, to increase legislation for unloose? So, I mean, I guess we can.
I think the, I think our reading of it's unclear at this point, what the state had asked. We'd like it cleared up.
Okay. So, you're looking for clarification on that?
No, no. This is why we're putting Class III felony.
So, maybe we need to amend it to remove the Class A misdemeanor and all of, you know, first time offenses, Class III felony. I don't know where you go from there, then.
Member Zay.
We don't, it's, I don't know what you're talking about. We don't have it on our, I don't see misdemeanor anywhere on our amendment here.
Great. Member Kuduski.
I'm reading from the stat, yeah. I mean, is it, right?
Right. Right.
So, any, so it's, so class, so first offense is Class A misdemeanor, any offense after that is a Class III felony. So, we want to remove, because it already has Class III felony in there. We do have that penalty, not on the first offense, however. So, do we want to amend the legislation to take out a Class, a Class A misdemeanor, and just have it, the first time you're caught with this weapon that doesn't have the license, a serial number on it, to have a Class III felony? Because I'm confused on this because it already has it in there. So, that's what I'm confused about.
Are you talking about the legislation?
Yes.
I can't amend state legislation. I'm just putting this in our legislative agenda. We want clarification.
But the clarification is right in the legislation. It says, first, a gun, a ghost gun will be charged with a Class A misdemeanor for the first offense and a Class C felony for subsequent offenses. So, in our legislative agenda, do we want to remove the Class A? That's what I'm asking. Because it says that, you're asking for increased penalties. Well, there is an increased penalty to a Class III felony from a subsequent charge.
Yes.
So, do we need the amendment? Do you see what I'm saying?
Yes.
So, you want to take out the Class A misdemeanor? So, I think we need to clarify that in this amendment.
I mean, when you're saying, I assume you're saying take it out, that we're gonna take it out. No, we're asking the state.
We want to, yes, that we want to relay that to our state legislators to remove, okay, then we can amend it to have them remove the Class A misdemeanor, and all offenses will be subject to Class III felony. How about that? Move to amend it?
I think that is the amendment.
I move to amend this amendment to remove the Class A misdemeanor from the first offense and charge all offenses as a Class III felony for lacking a serial number on a ghost gun and subsequent, you know.
Okay. Member Kuduski.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't think we need to get into specifics of the ghost guns, etc. But the 2023 legislative priorities, we got nine bullet points, I would add 10. And 10 would be what we've been hearing last week, this week. We hear a lot of people concerned about public safety. And I think, you know, the first part of this amendment that was passed out says DuPage County will seek additional legislation to increase penalties for offenses of armed habitual criminals, unlawful use of weapons. Basically, I think it's more stiffer penalties that'll help in public safety. But we write in here, you know, we want to protect the LGEF, fair share of revenue. Under environmental, it's, you know, support legislation that reduces the impact of our residents and businesses to have one environmental, protect, advocate for the animal population. But I mean, they're kind of broad, not getting into the weeds and say, you know, a Class III felony versus whatever. I think it's just, you know, we want to increase the legislation, it'll help with public safety with, you know, the bad guys. I mean, we've heard a lot of people, or bad people, I guess, talk about penalties. And we had some discussions about Safety Act or the Cash Bail program. And, you know, we tried to talk a lot about that, and we heard a lot of state attorneys around the state talk about it. And just recently, I think they've taken almost most of what Bob Berlin, our state's attorney, has proposed. And they've actually included a number of those as now detainable. So, again, I think we're just looking at some kind of language with regards to public safety. And as it takes into that first sentence, you know, more stiffer penalties. However we want to write it, it should be in as one of our ten, and you opened up your comments today. I think I got them written down about we advocate for public safety, etc. So, something to that effect, not as specific. There's no less, no specific legislation right now that we've got down there to take a position on, but kind of like our priorities. That's one of our top priorities, make DuPage safe. And whatever we can do as far as stiffer penalties, may encourage people not to be bad. It would be good. Thank you.
We just.
Well, I, for, Member Chaplin, we can't amend legislation from a past session. So, this is just a bullet point to put in there. So, when another public safety issue comes up, we're gonna ask them to clarify this and change that. We can't amend another piece of legislation from another General Assembly. There's a new General Assembly.
Right. But all I'm saying is it does call for a Class III felony. But if we want to reiterate that, I guess that's okay.
Okay. So, Member Galassi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to kind of echo what Member Kuduski said, and that is, there's been a lot of conversation today about tragedies regarding guns and stiffer gun laws. And I think as a board, we should all do whatever it is that we can to make our community safer. And if that means increasing penalties for the criminals that commit a crime with a gun, I think that we all need to fully support that. Thank you for bringing this to our attention. Members Aye.
Thank you. Member, member you.
So, I believe there's two motions that are currently out there, or is it just the one? Okay.
Okay. So, we have a motion on the original amendment. And a second. Okay. Roll call, please.
Aye.
Cahill.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Childress.
Yes.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Galassi.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Guston.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Shorzy.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
And you.
Okay. Member Zay.
Just now, roll call on the original legislative agenda as amended.
Member Eckoff.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I voted against this when it was in committee, just briefly. I had a number of concerns, but just three of them. One was that we talk about enacting a child tax credit. Doesn't list any amount, doesn't list what the other 12 states do, and it doesn't have any work incentive. So, I was against that. The homeless, addressing homelessness, as explained in committee, we've only got about 9% of the property here in DuPage County. And I'm all in favor of the actions that we've been taking with the hotel that was taken over. But regarding affordable housing, I think we should come up with some specific zoning criteria that we want to discuss, because the main portion of housing, or major component of the cost of housing, is property. And unless we're gonna come to an agreement as to reducing maybe the size of lots, then I don't think we're really gonna be able to do a whole lot on that. And then the mental health illness, I think mental health is probably the problem of our generation that we're gonna be working on for years and years and years. But I don't support the manner in which it's been being implemented in DuPage County right now, with each township passing of their own 708 Board, which is gonna result, if all nine of them pass it, having 81 people on nine different boards creating some type of policy for DuPage County. I am in favor of keeping townships involved in it, maybe collecting the revenue for it, but maybe only having each township appoint one person to a countywide Board that would work with our health department, and in that way save the administrative cost of every township and have additional money that could go towards the mentally ill, towards solving mental illness problems. So, just those three items alone, I can't support this.
Okay. Member Chaplin.
Thank you, Chair. Just regarding the affordable housing, we are talking with staff right now to come up with some type of a committee to address the affordable housing, Member Kuduski and myself. And so, we're gonna be looking into that. But any tools that the state can give us that makes it easier for us to provide this, that's what we're looking for. And so, that's just, I want to say, I think, you know, I think the board, I know most of us, we just came off the election, and when we ran, most of us, this was a big issue for us. And I think it was something that we all were concerned about and that we all supported. So, that's why we added that into the legislative agenda.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Aye.
Cahill.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Childress.
Yes.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Eckoff.
No.
Evans.
Aye.
Galassi.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Guston.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Shorzy.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
And you.
Aye.
Okay. On to item number 17, Public Works, and Member Garcia.
Thank you, Chair Conroy. Committee update for all of the new members here on the board. I wanted to make you aware that we do have over 100 million in construction projects right now going on in the county. So, the, this staff is very busy, and we're doing a lot of great things in the county. Many of the projects have planned, in their plans that have included sustainability, new improvements. So, I'm really excited to see that. One of them is Item B. We're getting there. And so, when we get to that, we'll be talking a little bit more about that. So, right now, I'm looking to, motion to, my motion to approve FMP 004423, Recommendation for the Approval of a Contract Purchase Order to Midwest Applied Solutions, Inc. to Provide Ionization Two Parts for the HVAC Clean Air Systems at the Judicial Office Facility and Annex for Facilities Management for the Period January 25, 2023 through July 21, 2023, for a Total Contract Amount Not to Exceed $68,040.
Second. Okay. It has been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Garcia.
Aye.
Guston.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Shorzy.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
You.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Cahill.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Childress.
Yes.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
And Galassi.
Aye.
Member Garcia.
Okay. Motion to approve FMP 004323, Recommendation for the Approval of a Contract Purchase Order to Midwest Applied Solutions, Inc. to Provide Ionization Two Parts for the HVAC Clean Air Systems at the Judicial Office Facility and Annex for Facilities Management for the Period January 24, 2023 through November 30, 2024, for a Total Contract Amount Not to Exceed $429,558.
Second. Okay. Member Covert.
Just had a really quick question about the company. Is this one located in Chicago? And where are the, are the solar panels also produced here? Or where?
Where are the panels?
Yes, yeah.
I'm a little bit into those.
And the business, I just don't, I'm not familiar with the business.
All right. They are located in Chicago. We have checked their references. They have done a lot of solar installations for local municipalities as well. So, they definitely check out. And the other question was, where are the panels produced? I think we have a.
We're generally manufacturers spec, we're not a specific panel, spec that.
Yeah. Once vendor, we, then we get the, we get the details where, the cut sheets, where they're gonna be coming from, and the performance data on them. So, we'll know that once we get in there. But we do have severe supply chain issues with some of these. So, it's gonna be somewhat, probably six, eight months before we're able to know some of the answers and actually get some of these installed.
Okay. Member Guston.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Cost versus return, what's the numbers on that? I know we have that on residential also, where companies come out and say, we'll put these on, and this is gonna be.
I'm actually very happy with that. So, originally, our original ROI on this, given the ComEd rebates, given the ASRECs, given everything, I think was around nine and a half years. But our bid came in a lot lower than what we anticipated for the cost for the panels. So, we're able to expand our array of solar panels at the same price we did. So, we are down to.
It's actually 19.
It was 19, now, now we're nine. So, it's half, half. So, and the life on the panels is over 20 years.
Okay. And then, do we have a grant program here at the county for residents if they want to do solar panels on their residential properties?
We do not offer a grant program, but we do offer a program to, to help facilitate permitting to get that through. So, that's through the development department, but we do not offer a grant program. We have a, we do participate in a, in a group solar buy out there, and a number of residents for DuPage County have participated in that.
And Mayor Chair, Chairwoman, if I may. So, with respect to funding, is there a possibility the ComEd? I know they got some funds available, but not necessarily in one direction or another. Is there a conversation that's been had with ComEd for any of our ComEds or residents or businesses that there might be grants?
Are you talking for residents?
Yeah.
There are, there are other programs that we are not even, because as a municipality, we don't get some of the tax incentives.
Right.
There are other programs through the state, the feds, the local, local providers for energy, that they are eligible for. And there are, we try to get residents in touch with all that. I know there's a lot of, a lot of seminars that are put on. I know that our environmental division helps facilitate that as well for, for solar power. So, yes, there are a number, and we're trying to get everybody connected for that.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you.
Leave is granted.
Motion to approve FMC.
We have to do a roll call. Member Kuduski just stepped out.
Brian.
Okay. Oh, Mildred Schollers did too. Okay. Can we take a roll, please? I think Covert's leaving now. And now, Kuduski's back. But we still have two missing, so let's do a roll call. Musical chairs. Roll call, please.
Garcia.
Aye.
Guston.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Shorzy.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, I move to approve FMCO 000623, Amendment to County Contract 5675-0001, SCRV issued to Intergirl Digirl Construction Incorporated for the Window Replacement Project at the Care Center for Facilities Management for a Change Order to Increase the Contract in the Amount of $305,514.
Can't.
Taking the original contract amount of $657,655 and resulting in amended contract total amount not to exceed $963,169.25, an increase of 46.46%. Roll call, I guess, from what I'm hearing.
Okay, is that, does anyone else have to leave the room?
[laughing].
Okay.
Who seconded it? Anybody seconded it?
Was it first, did we?
Zay seconded it.
Second, okay, roll call, please.
Garcia.
Hi.
Guston.
Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schwartzy.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
You.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Cahill.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Childress.
Yes.
Covert.
Aye.
DeSart.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
And Galassi.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, I move to approve FMCO 000623, Amendment to County Contract 5675-0001, SCRV issued to Intergirl Digirl Construction Incorporated for the Window Replacement Project at the Care Center for Facilities Management for a Change Order to Increase the Contract in the Amount of $305,514.
Yeah.
Taking the original contract amount of $657,655 and resulting in amended contract total amount not to exceed $963,169.25, an increase of 46.46%. Roll call, I guess, from what I'm hearing.
Okay, is that, does anyone else have to leave the room?
[laughing].
Okay.
Who seconded it? Anybody seconded it?
Did, was it first, did we?
Zay seconded it.
Second, okay, roll call, please.
Garcia.
Hi.
Guston.
Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schwartzy.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
You.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Cahill.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Childress.
Yes.
Covert.
Aye.
DeSart.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Galassi.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Guston.
Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schwartzy.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
You.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Cahill.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Childress.
Yes.
Covert. DeSart.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Galassi.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Guston.
Kuduski.
Aye.
And LaPlante.
Aye.
Okay. Okay. Member Ozog.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move for approval of DTR 003623, Resolution Recommendation for the Approval of an Agreement with V3 Wetland Restoration LLC for the Purchase of Wetland Bank Credits for the Improvement of Lamont Road from 87th Street to 83rd Street in the Amount of $4,238.
Leave is granted, Member Ozog.
Thank you. I move for approval of DTP 003923, Recommendation for the Approval of a Contract to Altor for Industries to Furnish and Deliver One New Wyler Asphalt Paver for the Division of Transportation for a Contract Total Not to Exceed $226,125 per Sourcewell Contract.
Leave is granted, Member Ozog.
Thank you. I move for approval, DTP 004023, Recommendation for the Approval of a Contract Purchase Order to Seling Trailers Incorporated to Furnish and Deliver One New Equipment Trailer for the Division of Transportation for a Contract Total Not to Exceed $35,588.40 per Sourcewell Contract.
Leave is granted, Member Ozog.
I move for approval of DTP 004123, Recommendation for the Approval of a Contract to Tiger Mowers LLC to Furnish and Deliver One New Tiger Boom Mower for the Division of Transportation for a Contract Total Not to Exceed $164,488.
Second most people roll.
And 22 cents per Sourcewell Contract.
Okay, leave is granted. Thank you, Member Ozog.
And finally, I move for approval of DTP 004223, Recommendation for the Approval of a Contract Purchase Order to Civil Tech Engineering for the, for professional appraisal and review services for the Division of Transportation, Section 23 APPRL 04LA for a Contract Total not to exceed $100,000.
Second most people roll.
Other professional services not subject to competitive bidding, vendor selected pursuant to DuPage County procurement ordinance.
Leave is granted. Thank you, Member Ozog.
Thank you.
Okay, and is there any discussion on item 20? Okay, in old business, I would like to thank all of you, first of all, for the respectfulness that we all showed getting through today's meeting. I know it was very difficult for all of us for many different reasons. Having said that, I think it's very important, and I'm telling myself this as well as each and every one of you, that we remember as elected officials that words matter. Words are very important. The repercussions of what we may say can be dangerous at times. Several of us know that personally. I know that personally. We have advised, we have been advised by the state's attorney's office over the weekend that it is possible for this board to issue a resolution of censure directed at the sheriff. It is my feeling that the board needs to have confidence that our sheriff is focusing on the safety of our residents and not engaging in inflammatory political rhetoric. I will present such a resolution at the next county board meeting for our members' consideration. Anyone else in old business? Members A.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Obviously, we've heard a lot of people's opinions today on the issue of the Protect Illinois Communities Act and the comments from our sheriff. First, I think we can all agree, there's too much gun violence in our country. The tragedy in Highland Park and the tragedies this weekend in California tell us these mass shootings have to stop. California has had an assault weapons ban since 1989, and no matter how hard government tries to legislate change, there is evil in the world, and that no matter how hard we try, we won't be able to stop it. I support our sheriff, Jim Mendrick, and his right to speak out about the problems with this act. I wish I'd see the same amount of scrutiny and attention being brought against a 27-year law enforcement officer than we see about crime and violence in our streets and cities. Where is the outrage from our congressional delegation about the 630 deaths and 2,600 shootings in the city of Chicago in 2022, or the 30 shootings this weekend and the seven deaths in the city? When Congressman Caston Foster and others were in the majority of the United States House, where was their legislation to have banned assault rifles nationally? I'm concerned about the veracity we're going after law enforcement official and, and nothing about stronger penalties for those who commit crimes with a firearm. The comments that we choose the laws we want to follow seems like a hollow one to me. When the city of Chicago passed Sanctuary City Act, they said they would not enforce federal immigration laws and work with ICE. I guess that doesn't count. Interesting, though, the county stated enforcing immigration law would take away needed resources and time from the Chicago Police Department. And if you talk to Sheriff Mendrick, this is exactly his concern. This issue will not be decided by this board, the State House, the issue of the Second Amendment, it will go to the courts, most likely the Supreme Court, to be done. Our sheriff has done great work in DuPage County over the last four years, and I have no doubt he'll continue to protect the citizens of our county. Do we forget about all his real, his all programs at the, at the jail? Getting people a start, a second start, real, uh, I'm sorry, starts for getting jobs as they get out, Hopes Garden, his program that helped feed thousands of our seniors. Let us work together to stop this senseless loss of life from gun violence. More federal and state funding is needed for mental health services, but also stronger penalties for those who commit crimes with firearms is needed. We need to send a message, have a deterrent and a consequence before people decide to use a gun when they commit a crime. Thank you.
Member you.
Constituents in my district, in a ratio of 10 to 1, have expressed severe disappointment and shock in Sheriff Mendrick's statement and his refusal to enforce the Protect Illinois Communities Act. They have expressed that they feel less safe, that they have lost faith that he will perform all of his duties. He has, in fact, eroded people's trust in his office and his abilities to discharge his duties. You know, these are the facts. It's not about emotion, it's about facts, there's data. 110 people a day are shot and killed every day in the United States. Firearms are the number one cause of death of children, and US stands alone among peer nations in the number of child firearm deaths. Since the expiration of the Brady Bill in 1994, assault weapons have proliferated in the United States, with mass shootings increasing each year, and the gun lobby and manufacturers have raked in billions of profits. Every country that has enacted strict gun safety measures have reduced gun deaths, and in particular Australia, they reduced their gun deaths by 50% after 10 years after those gun safety laws. I'm going to say something in response to what Members A said. Criminals don't start off as criminals, they are law-abiding citizens until they make a decision to cause mass bodily harm, and, and then they already have either access to a weapon or they gain access to a weapon. The gun lobby rhetoric will point to mental health or other personal feelings of the shooter, but that rhetoric fails because the United States has no monopoly on people with mental illness, no monopoly on evil. It's only in the United States that shooters gain easy access to assault weapons.
Members, I'm sorry, are you finished?
I will end there.
Okay. Member Ozog. Oh, Member Chaplin.
Thank you. Just with response to some comments that Members A made, and, and I heard a lot of people talk about this, about this law doesn't make us any safer and won't stop gun violence. There are a lot of laws on the books that don't stop crimes. Laws don't prevent crime, they deter crime. We have drunk driving laws, yet people still are pulled over for drunk driving. Drugs are illegal, yet people still use drugs. This law, I believe, is going to put barriers up and prevent some shootings, but not all. But, but what I wanted to say today was, I was reading Capital Facts yesterday, and there was a report, and it was titled, "The Law Never Required the Sheriffs to Go Door-to-Door." The Sheriff's Association Executive Director, Jim Katzchuk, said about a dozen of his members were saying, "We're not going door to, we're not going to knock on people's door and ask whether they have registered firearms. And if they're arrested solely on that charge, we will not house them in our jails until ordered to do so by a competent authority." Springfield's WICSTV reported that Katzchuk believe, also believes that the reaction to what those sheriffs had said about refusing to enforce the state's new weapon ban because of their constitutional objections was overblown. Well, when you put it that way, maybe so, but if that's the case, then why even facilitate the release of nearly identical statements by as many as 90 county sheriffs who say they won't enforce the law? The Association of the Chiefs of the State of Illinois said that there is nothing in the law mandating local compliance checks, and that is not a charge that is provided to us or mandated to us in the bill that passed and was signed by the governor. What the sheriffs have basically done is to deliberately inflame the public for no good reason, and then tossed in an empty threat to not house violators in their jails unless they have an order from a judge. So, when a sheriff, you know, and let me tell you this, I was one of Sheriff Mendrick's biggest supporters not that long ago. I'll tell you what, Hopes Garden, that's who facilitated that, Liz Chaplin. You know what else I did? I would go to that jail twice a week before COVID. I started the children's library, and I bought, brought books there, sometimes twice a week to the two separate little libraries we had, one in the release and one in the jail. So let me say this first, I, I, I support and appreciate what Sheriff Mendrick has done, but when we have a sheriff who has done so much good, who makes poor decisions and deliberately spreads misinformation and riling up our, the constituents, riling up his people, instead of calling for calm and strokes division by sharing a white, right-wing propaganda news broadcast on the official DuPage County's Facebook page, to me, it shows that he, right now, he is lacking that integrity, that judgment, that professionalism needed to perform those duties. You know, his actions really do put a black eye on the law enforcement officers that are out there doing their jobs every day. So I support you in this censure, and I think it's very needed, so thank you very much.
Member Garcia.
Thank you, Chair Conroy. I have to agree with Members A that, that we all should be absolutely concerned about public safety in our county. But I really take heart to what you said in the beginning, words matter. Words matter. What you're putting out there inflames, as Member Chaplin just said, and, and seeing all of the people here just, just fighting so hard for their right to own their gun. I guess what is so frustrating to me as a county board member and as a resident, mother, grandmother, is that they're not fighting as hard for us to all keep safe and have our lives kept safe by, you know, having guns monitored in some way. You know, 39 mass shootings in 2023, 39 mass shootings. Something needs to change. No one is going to take anyone's guns away. If I hear that again, it is a falsehood. No one's going to come, all you have to do is register your gun, so that if somebody else uses your gun, they can actually trace it back to you. That's it. No one's going to knock on your door, no one's going to do any of that. It's just a matter of just making sure that there are no more guns getting put out into the system. I think that is the least, the very least we can do, and I just hope that this population that, that it just turns a little bit toward loving the possessions that they hold so dearly, the guns, and toward human life around. That's what I'm hoping for. Thank you.
Member Ozog.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've used this quote before, but back in my Catholic high school days, we were taught that we had freedom with responsibility. And in this situation, unfortunately, Sheriff Mendrick decided to issue his statement, which echoed the statements of 80, 90 other sheriffs, before this had even gotten to the courts. And I think the assumption that this, this law would be challenged and would head up
And I think the assumption that this, this law would be challenged and would head up the court system was a no-brainer in this case. So I think that, I echo your thoughts, Chairman. Our words have impact and we need to really be very responsible when we are either making statements or speaking to our constituents. But in this particular case, it's hard to get past the idea that this was done so that we would have a day like today. And everyone who came here and spoke certainly has the right to do that. They certainly have the right to show up and we are all listening. We had over 200 comments online. I've certainly looked at all those. But the point here is that we live in inflammatory times and it's really important that all of us, especially us elected officials, don't inflame the public, especially when it can be avoided. Thank you.
Member Tornatori.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I just want to let everybody know, Karen's waiting for us over at the Health Department for something that we should have started at 12:30. So at the end of this, I know we have a collective bargaining meeting. Anybody who's not on collective bargaining, please go over to the Curzova Center, she's waiting, lunch will be served, and we'll get over there. And you can't just go for lunch, you got to stay. And then, and I texted her and we'll get over there as soon as possible. Regarding this, I didn't know we were going to reopen this. And I'm, my comment about what the sheriff said or didn't say is between me and the sheriff, I am concerned about censure. I do think that if we do take this, it ought to be an open discussion, a hearing of sorts, it's not in our county board rules, we've never done it before, it's never been contemplated. I'm all about process and procedure. I think if we're going to do this, we need to do it the right way, and I trust that we will under your leadership. My only question, everyone, is this, is it going to make us any better or bring us together to go through a censure quote-unquote hearing? Or is it going to just continue to divide us even further? And I'll make that comment when it's time, hopefully at the next meeting. And whatever my argument will be, it's going to be about whether or not we can work together, and quite frankly, not what the sheriff said or didn't say. But to that, again, I remind you, Curzova Center is open for lunch. Karen's waiting for us, so as soon as we can be done with this, we can get over there. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Member Childress.
December 5th was a proud day for all of us. There was a lot of firsts. We all stood on the stage, we put our hands on a Bible, and we took an oath. The oath was to enforce the laws of the state of Illinois. Now there, I see it as two different things. We have our lawmakers and we have our law enforcers. And as we pass laws in this state, we expect the law enforcement officials that have been elected to go and enforce those laws. You don't get to pick and choose which ones you like, which ones you don't like. If you want to be a lawmaker, then you should run for lawmaker. And that's really as simple as that. You know, I know that Madam Chair has been in Springfield a long time and passed laws, some laws people liked, some laws people didn't like. But she did what she thought she needed to do, worked with her own conscience and passed laws. That's what she wanted to do. She did not run for law enforcement officer. If you're going to be a law enforcement officer and take the oath, and take the oath and say, "I play, I swear that I'm going to do these things," and then sign off on your oath of office and turn it in, then you should fol, and you should follow what your oath says. That's really how I see it. Whether you like the law, whether you don't like the law, is kind of irrelevant to me. You said that you would do and enforce the laws of the state of Illinois, and that is what this board expects you to do. That's our, our U.
Okay. Okay, thank you. This is, this is something that brings about very emotional, high feelings in everybody, and everyone's opinion is very important. I respect each and every one of you, and I thank you for the way that you've dealt with this. We're now on to new business. Does anybody have anything under new business? Okay, Member Garcia.
Real quick, real quick, and it's really not new business, it's old business, but Chair Rutledge from the Environmental didn't bring it up, but she did a great job for the 18th Annual DuPage Environmental Summit, conservation, was run by the Conservation Foundation. If you want any information on electric vehicles, solar arrays, look for that link. It tells you everything you want to know, so that, just want to get that out there so everybody can watch that. Thank you.
Member Chaplin.
Just really quick, immediate following this, as Member Tornatori said, we do have collective bargaining and it should be very quick meeting.
Okay. Is that it?
I'm informed we have no, nothing requiring executive session.
Chair, Madam Chair, I do have new business. Madam Chair?
Oh, I'm sorry, Member Desart.
Thank you. I didn't want something really huge that happened today go unnoticed. There were, there were more people at today's public comments, county board public comments that I've ever seen in my four years here on this board. And I just wanted to say that the county board, the county staff did such an amazing job of making an overflow meeting open and accessible for everybody to come and feel welcome and heard. County staff should be applauded for their extra work in making the process of hearing from the public seamless and successful today. And I just have to say that it was something that might go unnoticed because they did such an excellent job of delivering those public comments to us from so many people. So thank you to the county board staff, excellent, excellent job today. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Member, Member Desart, and I second, second your statement, and thank you to the staff. This was not an easy task to undertake. And I will, a motion to adjourn? Okay. The meeting has been adjourned, the meeting has been adjourned to Tuesday, February 14th, 2023, at 10:00 AM.